Hey, good evening, folks. Welcome to the meeting of the Bennington Select Board. It's Monday, April 23rd, 2018. I apologize for the nice weather. It's not something that we usually get when we have a Select Board meeting. But, you know, spring has come and sprung in Vermont. And it might be for a day, it might be for two days. So, but, you know, this is what we live in the great part of this world for. I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Tom Jacobs and Chair of the Select Board. And I would like to go from maybe left to right. Nancy Lively, who is our secretary tonight.
Good evening, Chad Gordon.
Hello, I'm Jeanne Jenkins.
Good evening, I'm Donald Campbell.
Good evening, my name is Jim Carroll.
Good evening, Carson Thurber.
Thank you for coming, Jean Connor.
And I'm Stuart Hurd, Town Manager.
Great, thanks one and all. And thank you for everyone that has taken time to come to the Board meeting tonight. As we start our meeting, it's customary that we have the Pledge of Allegiance. And at this tonight, Carson, would you lead it?
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Carson.
First item on our agenda tonight is our first public hearing on the Charter amendments. Just by way of history, about six or seven months ago, probably longer now, we appointed a Charter Committee, a Charter Review Committee, to look at our somewhat dated and somewhat stale Charter. The Charter is our governance document for the Town of Bennington, but like everything else, it was time for review. The Charter Committee did an admirable job. They were very diligent in their effort. It was amazing, the time and effort that they put in reviewing each and every section of our Charter. We did learn from the recommendations from the Committee that a good part of the Charter was not so much of substance, but of form and errors in matters that have been taken forward over the years that frankly were inconsistent grammatically or in other contexts. However, the Charter Committee did come up with some significant recommendations to us, and we, as a Board, visited and heard from the members of that Committee on two different occasions. Our hope and expectation is now the Charter Amendments will be presented to the entire community, but by Vermont statute, we are required to open the discussion for a comment on a public hearing basis relative to the Charter Amendments. Having said that, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the Charter Amendments as circulated? And I'm not surprised by the element of silence because we've dealt with this. Crickets are right. So, again, we are dealing with the requirement of the statute that we have a public hearing. This has been pretty much vented through the entire process, so it'll be another hearing coming up two weeks hence, right, Stu?
May 14th.
Yep, okay. And then we will be voting on the, what's the date that'll be voted on?
June 5th.
So, June 5th, we will actually vote on the Charter Amendments. And in the event that it passes, it then goes up to the Vermont Legislature for its review, then if it finds it satisfactory, then the Charter Amendments will take effect and our new Charter will be in place. A Charter is not something that lasts forever. It's a dynamic document. That's what we've learned with the Charter Review. So even when, anticipating that it'll be amended with the vote and also by the Legislature approving it, I expect that we'll be revisiting it from time to time again. Because, as I said, that's what we look to direct and guide our governance of our community. And I'm not trying to limit the discussion on the Charter itself. And if there are any questions or comments as you review it, copies are available on the website and also...
I have about five or six copies with me tonight, if anyone is interested. I can circulate them.
And they can take them along, and if there are questions on the 13th, we'll be happy to address those at that point in time.
Tom, it might be worth just mentioning the revision schedule. So, there's a little element of speak now or forever hold your peace, right?
You mean tonight?
Yeah, tonight would be, if there are changes that we should make, tonight would be a very convenient...
It would be appropriate, but anticipating that there probably are not going to be any matters of substance, I think we can move forward.
Okay.
For the 13th.
Assuming it passes in June and the Legislature approves it, when will it...
Next January.
January. So when would it, as soon as they vote yes, that's when it is, it would be effective?
It'll be effective.
Does it require the Governor's signature? Just out of curiosity.
I have to defer to Stu, but I expect every act of the Legislature does require the Governor's signature.
Yes, it does.
Yep.
And this probably, because it's being voted in June, will most likely not be taken up by the Legislature until next session.
Right.
Which is January, right?
January.
Does that answer that?
Yes, thank you.
I'm going to, unless I hear otherwise, close the public hearing on the Charter Amendments and move to the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda consists of our minutes of April 9th, 2018, and the warrants which have been circulated with our packet. I'll entertain a motion for acceptance of the Consent Agenda.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, go for it.
On page 2, line 71, "The tennis courts that I asked about were actually behind Molly Stark's school." Just, I felt like that was important enough to correct. It's not behind the tennis bubble, it's behind, they're behind Molly Stark's school. Thanks, Nancy.
With that addition, is, you're comfortable?
Fine.
Good. All in favor signify, I'm sorry.
We'll abstain.
Okay, good. We have one abstention. All in favor signify by aye, and that's six in favor and one abstention. Chad was absent for that meeting. We next have our Citizens Comment Period, and folks have been kind enough to sign up. I think I have Dare Munier, Youth Appreciation. Munier? Good.
(inaudible)
Okay, you have to go, yeah! So, otherwise, only, we only get the benefit and the public doesn't on the TV.
Usually I'm loud enough, so...
Don't be nervous.
Check, good?
Perfect.
So, Youth Appreciation Day, our sixth Youth Appreciation Day is on May 5th, and I have some handouts, if anybody's interested, Bring Your Littles. It's a partnership between the Alliance for Community Transformations, where I work, United Ways of Bennington, Americor Vista, and the Town of Bennington. So, we just wanted to say thank you too for your support. Everybody from Zerwatt to Mark Sawyer has been fantastic. So, let's pray it's not going to snow. And again, it's really important to remember that this is for all of our youth and it's absolutely free. Okay?
Great.
Questions, comments?
It's open to all of the community youth and it's no expense to them, so...
No, everything, including the food. Everything's been donated.
Would you just remind us what the activities are that day?
So, it's going to be, local businesses and organizations are hosting activity booths of different kinds. We're going to have some larger scale activities like the Vermont Storm Comms, we're going to have Taekwondo demonstrations, we're going to have a local illustrator come and do like a drawing workshop, which is new this year. We're going to have a, what's it called? Dance Dance Revolution, which is like a video game, but with your body, I guess. That's going to be new. And then, in the evening, we're having a teen movie night, which we're really excited about. That's new this year, to try to draw in some of the older kids.
What are the times for the...
Well, the booths run from 11 to 3:00, and then we'll start about dusk for the movie onto the pavilion. And it's the Lower Willow Park this year.
Lower, okay.
Mm-hmm.
That's a good, good point, because it's always been on the higher.
Yeah, and that gets a little bit challenging with parking. The lower lot is so much better, so...
Great.
How are you going to show the movies?
With the help of Bennington College.
They have one of those inflatable screens?
Oh, I'm not sure if it's inflatable, but there will be a screen.
They do make them.
You made that up.
No, no, they truly are.
Be looking forward to it.
So, you're going to come out then, right?
Maybe.
It's Jumanji, by the way. The new one.
It's a good movie. I enjoyed that.
Well, thank you very much for...
Thank you.
Sharing that with us there. Bruce Lehrman. It better be something to do with cycling, bicycling, and otherwise.
Yes, my name is Bruce Lehrman, and seizing this temporary opportunity of a spring day, I'm going to invite you all to a presentation I'm giving this Thursday night at 6:30 at the Union of Federalist Unitarian Fellowship Meeting House on School Street about the Shared Road. It's going to be a presentation and a discussion about how motorists and cyclists can more effectively cooperate to get everybody where they want to go. And hopefully, it will encourage more cycling for transportation use in the community, and you're all welcome. The public is welcome.
Great, 6:30 this Thursday. Great, thanks a lot, Bruce. And I saw you're, you were on your bike today.
I wasn't.
But I was a little concerned that you were going up Elm Street faster than I was in my car. Was it, is that because you have a motorized bike?
I do have a friend that helps me and who runs on electricity, yes.
Yeah, that's good. See, you're taking advantage of alternative energy sources other than yourself?
Of course.
Good?
Yes.
Thanks.
Community solar, for that matter, yes.
Yeah, okay. Any questions of Bruce? Thanks very much, Bruce. We'll see you.
Thank you.
Bobby Casland, and are you joined with, by Marie? There's two folks here on solar.
I think we have different points.
Oh, you have different points, okay. I thought you might have been a tag team tonight. Bobby, go ahead, you're first on the list.
Hi.
How are you? Good to see you.
Have a few questions on the solar for Willow Road area up through, all through there. I know there's two different projects going on there, and the use of Willow Road is going to be used quite a bit.
I'm going to have to defer to Stu, but there is...
The redesign of both Chelsea and Apple Hill brings all of the construction equipment and access off the end of Willow Road up along, parallel to the interchange up to the site.
But that's still under review by the state?
It's before the Public Utilities Commission.
So, it's not...
Do you know if that's been entered into an agreement, a written agreement regarding the use of Willow Road yet, or no?
There's been no agreement with the developers for the use of Willow Road. It's a public highway, and therefore, they have rights to access and use Willow Road for their purposes. If you have concerns about how they're using it, you might want to address your concerns to the Public Utilities Commission.
Oh, I did.
Did you?
I'm just, you know, really concerned if there's any agreement, when there will be an agreement.
I don't think that an agreement is needed. It's a public highway.
It is. Has there been any studies done on, like, Hewitt Drive comes down, but it's surrounded by wetlands. It's a small, like a half a mile, not even that, long. It's all over, you know, it's surrounded both sides by wetlands. I don't know if it would hold all that construction.
Access to the site is right off the end of Willow Road. As you get down to the dead end portion, there's a road that runs up along that the state constructed, it's a gravel road, and turned over to the town when they built the new interstate, and that will be how the projects are accessed.
Oh, so they're not going to be coming down Hewitt Drive to Willow Road?
I can't guarantee you they won't be coming down Hewitt Drive. I don't know exactly how they'll approach the project, but they will be coming off of the end of Willow Road and up along that drive that takes them up into the site.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of concerns there. There's like two daycares, there's tons of kids all over the road all the time. It's maybe not even a mile long.
Bobby, did you address that to the Public Service Commission?
I did.
Because there, when they review this, all of those things would be part of their record and also their findings and requirements, I expect. Isn't that true?
Well, unfortunately, I didn't know about this project when it started four years ago. I'm just finding out about this.
Have in mind, this Board's all too familiar with those projects. The essence of it is, it is not ready to go.
Okay.
It's still on the drawing board until the Public Service Board and/or...
Is there any ways to get it off the drawing board?
I think it's been, not here, but at Public Service Board is, that's where you should make sure.
Oh, I've been there, okay.
I have one question for you. You and I were at the same meeting, we sat next to each other, and it was explained to you about how you can become an inter-reader.
I did.
You did, good for you.
Interested to part, yeah.
Good for you.
Okay, thank you.
And Marie? Is that Leon? Hi, Marie.
Hi. Hi, it's Maru, my name is Maru Leon, and I'm here representing my husband and I and also Mount Antony Country Club and all of our 138 members. We are very opposed and disappointed about this solar project, and where we're coming from is really, we are business owners in this town trying to promote the economy of Bennington and its natural beauty. And we are understanding that what this project is trying to do is clear cut basically close to 20 acres on a hillside that is directly across from the monument, that we can see from the monument, a historic site that is the most visited historic site in the state of Vermont, and also at the gateway of the state. People come through Vermont, through Bennington, and now they go on to the bypass into northern Vermont, and that's exactly what they're going to see is this solar power. And as a business owner, we are horrified that this is getting, that is as far along as it is, and there's a lot of misinformation. We thought that this project had died, that the permit had been denied, and all of a sudden, you know, last week, I was able to go and also became an intervenor, but it was like a, there's very, there's a very small window to become active, to try to make this, to stop it from happening, because the landscape of Vermont will be forever, of this beautiful piece of Vermont will be forever changed. We won't be able to go back.
The points that you are making have been made many times by folks, advocates and proponents and opponents of this, these projects. And we, as a result, are, we opposed the projects.
Well, actually, I think she's referring to Battle Creek.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out.
It's the Battle Creek Project.
I'm not referring to Chelsea, I'm referring to Chelsea and to Apple Hill.
Yeah, she's talking about...
Both of those projects, both of those projects is unclear that actually that the town is opposing them.
Yes, we did. We are, we have.
But the language that the developer has just used in their, in their latest...
Filings.
Filings, says that everybody is on board.
No.
So, I just want to make sure that it's clarified, that it's communicated. There's so much misinformation, and even people that are going to be so affected that live on that same road have no idea. Nobody has approached them to say, you know, this, your life will be forever changed if this is really going to happen.
The town is actually opposing Chelsea, and that goes back to the original Chelsea and now the revised Chelsea that is being presented before the Public Utilities Commission. The town has signed a memorandum of understanding on Battle Creek 1 because it is effectively screened from all of the adjoining properties, at least according to the presentations we've seen.
But I saw the simulations in a 10-foot black screen box to be seen from across the valley or next to your neighbor. 10-foot of black screen, and then also this, you know, basically shiny surface on the top of this box is really not why people come to Vermont. We are pro-solar power. We have been investigating into our own property at the Country Club to find a way to become more efficient and ways to put solar power in our property. But we would never put it on a hill, we would never sacrifice the views or the beauty of the landscape. And this is part of the, this is part of the town plan, and it clearly says that the three removals should not cause undue alteration of their natural vegetation pattern of the hillside or reach line. And what they're trying to propose right now is exactly across clearing a forest of close to 20 acres, and this is the view from the Country Club right now. This is the town plan guidelines.
In fact, we, actually, the Board was involved in reviewing all of those aspects. My suggestion, Marie, would be for you to meet with Dan and/or Stuart so that they can explain to you where we are, what our decision was as a Select Board and Town, so that you'll either hopefully get more comfort in the process, because it's not fair to you to get like surprised. And I don't think, based upon what all the efforts that went through in the public hearings, that those comments that you're making have already been made as part of the record. And maybe you could just visit, and if you don't get the satisfaction, then we'll talk with you again.
Okay.
I'd just like to make a couple of comments. Maru, the other night, if you remember, I introduced the town plan and our proposed ordinance as evidence to the Public Utility Corporation or Commission?
Commission.
Commission. In addition to that, I think we are very well represented by both Rob Wilmington and Merrill Bent, and so far, we're that in a thousand with them.
Great, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is number five, talking about the Downtown Improvement District Funding. Could we have the Bennington Downtown Alliance BDA, for lack of confusion, hopefully, present through John Shanahan, the Alliance's work plan and funding request?
Give me one second, I'm going to move this just because I realized...
And, Tom, I'm going to recuse myself.
Oh, okay, thank you. The record will indicate that Jeanne Jenkins has recused herself. Thanks.
Stu?
He's an attorney up there, too. Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you, everybody. Is that okay?
Yes.
All right. You all have our work plans and our annual budget in front of you, but I put together a PowerPoint just to run through as a reminder or refresher or sometime, for some of you the first time, a lot of the things that the Bennington Downtown Alliance does and why we exist. I'm John Shanahan, I'm the Director, and with me is Eric Peterson, he is the current President of the Bennington Downtown Alliance Board. And I'll be doing the presentation, but Eric is up here in case there's questions afterward that he can help with. And forgive me if this doesn't work the way I want it to. But I started off breaking down what we do into three categories. The first one is partnerships, and that's, I believe, and our Board believes, that that's our greatest strength, because that's where we're relied upon the most with many organizations in town. Either we work with them once a year or on a daily basis, but there's just about every organization in town that we do work with. And the reason we put so much effort into that is we feel that working in partnership with other organizations not only makes us stronger, more successful, but it does for them as well. Next category is promotion. Promotion breaks down into two categories, events and activities. Very time-consuming, everything, all of our events and activities are free, so it's a net loss financially, everything we do, but it's important in bringing people down here. Events, we categorize as large activities, and activity, the myriad things that we do throughout the year that are small, a lot of them unnoticed, but a lot of them have to do with our partnerships. And then advertising and marketing falls under promotion as well. And finally, projects. Projects, we take out of advertising promotions because it's mostly a lot of maintenance things or our work with local organizations and the members of those organizations. We're going to start with partnerships, and probably, partnership is with the Town of Bennington. It's a relationship where we actually oversee an employee who replaced a Town of Bennington staff member in the downtown maintenance. We do all of our work on the streetscape along with the Highway Department and Buildings and Ground, and we work most closely with the Town of Bennington symbiotically. A lot of things that we do takes it off the shoulders of the town and vice versa. Another relationship, and I'm going to speed this up a little bit, Chamber of Commerce. We sit on each other's communication. We tap into each other's volunteers all the time because they're the other organization with a large amount of volunteers, supplies as well. We share everything we have. Next, and one that's very important to me as well, is the Bennington Area Arts Council, and I'm pleased that so many of you are here tonight. I'm the current Treasurer of the Arts Council. And the history of the Arts Council goes way back, but it kind of went into a hiatus, but it was from the Bennington Downtown Alliance's Arts Committee that it found life again. We had an Arts Committee that kept going because there was nothing keeping the cultural aspect of our town together, and we thought it was important. And along with Greg Van Houten, we, it found a resurgence, and it's now reestablished. We meet at our boardroom, and it's becoming a very powerful organization again, and I'm thrilled about that. I think arts and cultural is economic development. The Bennington Economic Development Partners, that is another group of people that came out of the Bennington Downtown Alliance, our Economic Vitality. A few years ago, it was brought up to me that everybody's working in silos in town and all the organizations are going about their business but not doing it together. And so, we met with the Chamber of Commerce back when I think it was Lindy was President, and decided to, once a month, get together just for communication and make sure we're all working in the same direction. And from the two partners, it grew into about 30 partners. It actually took on too much of a life of its own, and now it's back where we have a recruitment committee that meets once a month. Grow Bennington, I think everybody knows about the Grow Bennington Initiative. Lynn is here this evening, she's the star of that program. We embraced that, it wasn't on this year's work plan, but we embraced it just because the enthusiasm and the strength and the power behind it, and it aligned with all of our goals. So, it's taken quite a bit of our time this year, but we're gladly going into that partnership. Newer Partnership is the Southern Vermont Economy Project. That's between Wyndham County and Bennington County, and it's, a lot of the entities in Southern Vermont are all working together to market us in this area. Of course, the Vermont Downtown Program. We are the designated Vermont Downtown Program in Bennington, recognized locally and by, on the state level as well. Same with Vermont Arts Council, the Bennington Redevelopment Group, which we're going to be starting, really exciting new program, they just joined us at our board meeting. And as soon as they're up and running a little further along, we're starting a program jointly that will benefit the Merchants Downtown. Citizens for Greater Bennington, I've been a member of that for years, and we're very fortunate to have them. They'll be here for another couple of months before making a final decision, but everything, all the work that's been done through the citizens has been a great benefit to Downtown. Vermont Arts Exchange, since moving downtown, we work hand-in-hand with them. And I have to hit the right button for this to work. Catamount Connections, Kayla Becker, we're, one of the projects that the Bennington Downtown Alliance is doing now is moving from the park at 336 right into Merchants Park, and we're thrilled to be working with Kayla and the folks at Catamount Connections to do a joint project at Merchants. Other groups, and I'll go a little faster, Four Corners North, United Counseling Service, Teens for Change, Summer Salatina, you can see it all, Interact, Dollars for Scholars, Neighbor Works, Mosaic Program, Bennington Farmers Market. These are all groups that we have connections with throughout the year and will continue to. And the list is longer than that, and like I said to Dare, she's still here, my apologies. We also work with ACT and so many more organizations than that. Next category, promotion. we're thrilled to be working with Kayla and the folks at Catamount Connections to do a joint project at Merchants. Other groups, and I'll go a little faster, Four Corners North, United Counseling Service, Teens for Change, Summer Salatina, you can see it all, Interact, Dollars for Scholars, Neighbor Works, Mosaic Program, Bennington Farmers Market. These are all groups that we have connections with throughout the year and will continue to. And the list is longer than that, and like I said to Dare, she's still here, my apologies. We also work with ACT, and so many more organizations than that. Next category, promotion. Under promotion, we'll start off with the events and activities. Some of our big events in Town of Bennington, Arts Weekend, that's one that our partnership, it pays off, pulling off an entire weekend full of events, both downtown, on the West End, at Four Corners North. Of course, May Fest is the big one, and that is a couple weeks from now, on Saturday, May 26, from 10 to 5. As I mentioned before, all of our events are for the public, and it's gonna be sunny and 70 on that day. Fall Palooza, that's the one that we end up the season with. That one we do in conjunction with all the merchants, turning into a much larger event than we ever thought it would be. Coming up on April 25th, the Exposion at the Mount Anthony Country Club, that we do with the Arts Council and Greg Van Houten. And of course, First Fridays, this year, we're working with a new group, so we're adding an additional Friday, so it's gonna start in June as opposed to the normal July. First Fridays, when all the merchants stay open later. This is a picture of our summer marketplace that we work with Andrea Grimsely, bringing some more activity to the street. Small Business Saturday, which is becoming a really powerful event nationwide, and we've been recognized for the participation that we got in Bennington. And then just recently, we did the Dion National Snowshoes with our partners, and of course, Tim Van Worden. Some of the activities that people don't usually see visibly, but happen behind the scene, we work with groups like ACT and like Bennington ACTs, where the students come down and do a lot of projects, maintenance projects, they help with the holiday decorations, spring cleanup, and improvement projects. Window Works, we do with Vermont Arts Exchange and Mosaic. We do cleanup all year long. This is one example of how we work with the group, and this is Keller Williams, who put in a couple days for us last year, in more projects, working at Fountain Park. You do all the events, and you give people reasons to come here, but then you gotta let them know what's going on. We have a very small marketing, we have a very small budget for everything we do, but especially for marketing. So we do as much promotion as we can, as in partnerships, in-kind trade, and just doing storyboard that they can use in their publications. One we use all the time is the New England Newspapers, which includes the Bennington Banner. We go down each year to the Eastern States Exposition. Matthew from the Chamber and myself go down, we spend days down there because when you volunteer down there, you get all your stuff up on the counter, and you reach up to, well, the Eastern States gets over a million people each year. Our website, our website gives all of our members their own access code, they can update their information, their website, any specials that they have going on, menus. We manage the kiosk, which is pictured there at the Four Corners. We work with not-for-profits posting up events in maintaining and repairing the kiosk. Channel 13, Eric organized a marketing campaign last year that we ran commercials over in the Albany Market. Travel magazines, all the time we submit, press releases. Vermont News Guide is a great local newspaper that has a lot of story. Social media, we have two volunteers, one's here tonight, who just are Facebook, manage our Facebook page. One shares and expands on all the Facebook posting for the merchants downtown, and another volunteer uses our Facebook page to promote the events that we have coming up. WBTN, we do art shows, the Serotone, advertise in that area because that's the market we're really looking for. Cat TV, the Troy Records and other market we're looking for, and of course, WAMC, we have, just started with the Arts Council and Exposion, 37 spots playing over on WAMC, which reaches all through New England. Going on to projects. Most of our projects are the ones that take a long time to complete, and that's why I put the Park at 336 first. The property was purchased by one of our board members. The Bennington Downtown Alliance spent a few years, we've raised all the money that we need. We have another volunteer that works for an architectural firm that donated all of their services, and will be breaking ground this summer and completing it this summer as well, at the same time that we're moving on to Merchants Park. Bennington Connection, I put that up there because that's so much more important, it's number one, invisible, but Downtown Bennington has the state, the largest seamless Wi-Fi network in the state of Vermont. I worked on that with Mike Harrington, but, and that's a connection that needs constant update. Now it's in Z-Score. Efficiency Vermont, we led that last year with an efficiency program through Downtown Bennington, actually all through the town. A year and a half ago, I made a connection up at Stratton Mountain, where I've got thousands of chairs and tables during a renovation, and you'll see them all through town right now. I reached out to over thirty-five not-for-profit, for-profit organizations to use that furniture, and you'll see it all over town. Town of Bennington actually has quite a few of the chairs as well. Green Table, that's a pop-up co-op that I've been working with Zawad on, really fun, we would've been working with Krista Spironi, and that was our first for into a pop-up that went very, very well. Fortunately and unfortunately, it's coming to an end, but that's because the work at the Putnam Square is beginning in a few weeks. Holiday Decorations, we got a lot of compliments, it looks great, love working with the town on this, but it's actually about a six-month project that you just don't realize, but we've actually, have already started on next year's. Takes a lot of time, but it's well worth it, it pays off a lot. Streetscape, we spend a lot of time on that. The Downtown Planting Program, which is part of the Bennington in Bloom, we do the layout for the Bennington in Bloom Committee, and we do a walk-around assessment throughout the summer, working with the florist Caitlin Pettit throughout the year, to ensure that it looks great, each year gets improved, and you see some examples of that, and everybody knows about the Bennington in Bloom and the Downtown Planting. Benches and barrels, each year, we refinish either the barrels or the benches. Last year, we spent a lot of time with the new recycling program, and our staff member, Bill, worked with Mark Sawyer to get all that done. Every week, every day, we're constantly removing litter downtown. Our goal is to have zero litter in downtown because the cleaner you keep it, the cleaner it tends to stay. And that's true too with graffiti. Whenever we see graffiti, we photograph it and then instantly remove it, getting the owner's approval if we need it. Pole banners, we've done them for years, and now we're doing, we have a new banner program out that we're doing with the Grow Bennington Group, as well as the tree lighting. Window washing, we look at vacant stores, and we go and we wash those windows just so that the buildings don't look abandoned, even though they're not maintained, so we do the maintenance for them. Lots of minor repairs downtown. And last year, we started a new program for the town where it's weed removal. If you see in the bottom corner of that picture there where the brick ribbon is, lots of weeds like to come up through there, so we came up with an environmentally friendly solution that we're starting next week, and we spray all of downtown so that weeds aren't growing up through the sidewalks. And then kiosk maintenance, kiosk is a huge marketing tool for all the not-for-profits in town, in the entertainment venues. And even though it's under projects, it really doesn't belong there, but the Downtown Visitor Center, that takes a lot of our effort, it's a beautiful building downtown that houses our offices, but the most important thing about it is it's run by a bunch of volunteers, about six or seven docents that operate the Downtown Visitor Center. It's one of the best marketing tools for Bennington, or downtown as well, because we get to greet people. It's open and staffed between May and the end of October. It houses menus, brochures, maps, the public restroom for downtown. And currently, we're in the process of turning an expanded office upstairs into a community boardroom that organizations use, three or four use now, a couple of businesses use it now, but it's a nice addition to downtown, and we focused on that, and really wanted to build it with the town in hopes of bringing more people downtown to use the facility and then spend some time downtown. How we go about it. The Bennington Downtown Alliance has a board of directors, it's made up of about fifteen business owners, residents, leaders of organizations, and it has four working committees. The first working committee I'll talk about real quickly is the Economic Vitality Committee, that, their concern is economic development, working with our partners, who are also concerned with economic development, and working with new merchants and existing merchants. We've created a new business resource kit, and that's the project we're gonna be working on with the Putnam Redevelopment Group. Our design committee is everything visible on the street. They're the ones who are working on the parks, they're the ones who are concerned with, in working with Grow Bennington, litter, graffiti removal, the banners, the flowers, working with the town. Anything visible downtown is the concern of our design committee. Marketing and promotion is just that, the volunteers that serve on these, that committee, it's how we spend our time and money in marketing and advertising, and what events we put our time into. And then finally, an organization committee. That's called, like an executive committee at most organizations, they're concerned with the internal staff and operations, as well as our members. What does it mean for the Town of Bennington, why we have a designated downtown and a downtown program? Because we have a designated downtown and a downtown program, it opens the Town of Bennington up to these benefits, the historic tax credits, transportation funding, and then priority when it comes to applying for state grants. What we have to do as that designated organization is we follow the National Main Street Four Point approach that I've just explained to you, through design, economic vitality, marketing and promotion and organization. Here's probably my least favorite part of my job, is the reports that are required to have the downtown designation. Working with Zawad and Cat Buyers up at BRCRC, we have mapped out the entire downtown, created a complete inventory, all the business owners, their addresses, and then we have to track, or I have to track, private investment, public investment, volunteer hours, vacancy rates, and I do that on a quarterly basis and then submit it on an annual basis. Very time-consuming, they use it to compare statewide numbers and national numbers. It's just one of those things we have to do, but takes a lot of our efforts.
I'd like to really see that, John, I'm surprised we didn't get a hard copy.
You did. It was part of the, oh, maybe you didn't get it, it was part of the downtown designation application?
Hmm.
The inventory?
Hmm.
The map? Yeah, I have all that, and I can get that to you.
Okay.
It's just a listing of the hundreds of businesses downtown, all the layout, it's an aerial map, and they're all numbered so that they're corresponding. But it was part of the app that was submitted, it had to go, right? So, yeah, but I can get your copy.
Okay.
It's actually kind of interesting, because we have to track first floor, second floor, third floor occupancy. The Visitor Center, love that part of it because of the docents, because of the amount of usage it gets, a lot of money, a lot of hard work, but it's worth it, it's a beautiful place. Building and maintaining a volunteer program, so I'm gonna take this opportunity to thank, we have over seventy-five volunteers on, between our board, our committees, the docents at the Welcome Center, and those who volunteer for all of our events. We wouldn't be able to do anything without all of those seventy-five-plus people. And then annually coming to the Select Board. We work with the Town of Bennington, so we like to present to the Town of Bennington, so that you do know. Hopefully, you've learned some stuff extra that we did. If not, I'd love to keep coming and reporting to you guys because there's so much going on. That budget and work plans you have in front of you, I'm open, I'd love for you to give me some questions. This year, we're asking for a 2.1% increase out of necessity, and what makes us feel pretty good is it's still lower percentage-wise to the property owners than it was back in 2006, 2007, and for quite some time. So I'm gonna leave it at that and open it up for questions, but I do need to close with an apology to all those organizations that we work closely with that I failed to mention just because of time, and to my board of directors who will afterwards say, why didn't you mention this, and why didn't you mention that? I think my twenty minutes is close to being almost.
John, that's good. Before I turn it over to my colleagues for questions, just a couple clarifications. You're requesting this year is $77,694.72, is that, that's the number that I have?
Seventy-seven, six, nine, four, seventy-two.
Yep. And the other aspects of your budget, your income sources are?
Events, membership.
I think I saw that, but I just wanna, just go on the record.
Events and membership, and sponsorship. It was designed this way, our, each downtown program is 2,600 across the country, they're all different, they're meant to work whatever works best in the community. The most ideal situation is the one we have here in Bennington, and the purpose of a district that supports the program is so that we don't have to spend the lion's share of our time in fundraising. There are some downtown programs that spend almost all their time doing that, which makes them a lot less effective, but it's where you lose all the partnerships and all the projects and all the activities that you're doing, spending it on membership and fundraising.
And as I understand it, from the charter, the actual provisions for the tax district is that the manager has the prerogative of engaging an entity to provide services, and what you presented tonight is the report on that entity providing those services to the town.
Correct.
I have some questions.
Yep. I'm just, I'm just gonna go right down this way if I could, and we'll, go ahead, Chad.
I'll start. I think you answered one of my questions, I was just going through line items and on my free time and board here. The only thing I, most of them made sense to me, pop-up shots, is it shops, is it the green space, is that what that is? There is a line up there?
Yeah.
Okay. So I think you answered that question. The other, I saw dues and subscriptions, it seems like every month it's a small amount, and then there's one that's 7.60, is that an annual, what's that for?
Our website?
That's website?
Off the top of my head, yeah, it sounds about what we pay, an annual fee for the website and then a monthly charge.
Okay. And then, last question, copier and rental services, you guys have your own copier right there? Is that something you lease on your own, or is that through with the town?
We lease it on our own, and only because we, we're a 501(c)(3), which we have an incredibly low rate for our copier, like the Green Table, we, a lot of our organizations use it.
Gotcha.
Only because it's such a low rate.
All right. I just didn't know if it was something that we could partner with the town, you know?
I, I, I'd almost guarantee we have a lower rate than the town, if not, in exact same.
All right. That was it, thank you.
All rates are pretty low, John.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll dare you on that one.
Because when I hear what some people are paying, I can't believe.
No reason to fight over it, though.
Toddle.
John and everybody else, you know, with your organization, I just have to say, this is a tremendous amount of work. It's very clear that you have a lot of undertakings, and you have your hands in a lot of the things about town that are good, so thank you deeply, you know, for that. Even with seventy-five volunteers, it's hard to imagine how you get all this done, but it's, it's really a great, it's really a great community effort, and I thank you for leaving the charge on it. I have a couple questions. One, very small question, but I'm interested in it. As a, as a overall thing, it's a little bit difficult to read your work plan and know how much how much time you're putting into each of the efforts. So, you know, it's quite a long list of things that you're getting done. It's a little hard for us to know, do you spend a few hours on this or do you spend a few days or weeks or whatever? So it might be, you know, at some point it might be interesting to do a little deeper dive into how you, you know, where you put your priorities. But I appreciate the fact that you rank them and I assume that the number one is the, if we're looking at priorities and it has one, two, three, the number one is where you're putting most of your chips, most of your time, most of your...
Well, not necessarily one, two, three, but one, two and three is where we put most of our time.
Okay. So everything in priorities is where you're putting most of your effort. Okay. Well, one of the ones that caught my eye was your aspiration to increase the social media presence by seventy-five percent. So you had mentioned that you had a couple of your Facebook people here tonight.
I have one of them here tonight.
Would you be willing to just talk about how that's gone or what, what the program is with that?
She helps promote through our social media platforms, what we do, our events and upcoming activities. The person who does the external is actually in Phoenix right now for a couple of weeks, but she's still working out there on that. The goal with her is, the goal with, for us, actually on both sides of that, is to better manage and promote what it is we're doing, which is kind of where we, can ask my board, it's where I fail the most. But the woman who's managing it, tracing everybody else's activity on Facebook and then boosting that, when she gets back, she's devoting more time to it.
So you think you're going to hit your twenty-five percent increase target?
We're going to...
Just your measure of success?
We top that easily.
Excellent. Excellent. Great. Another question, I guess, it looks like there's a lot of governance that goes on, but I assume that that's mostly your board's work. So you're not probably spending a lot of your time on that, are you? The governance of the, of the BDA itself?
If you could be more specific, my organization committee, like we prepare our minutes and our reports in-house, staff, and our organization committee relieves my monthly director's report, the minutes from previous meetings, our monthly financials, and once the org committee approves it, then it goes to a full board for approval. But we do everything in-house except for any annual audit.
Yeah. It's amazing. And you have essentially one and a half full-time equivalents working, right?
One and a half, Bennington Downtown Alliance dedicated. We also now oversee a halftime position with the contract through the town. And that's Bill.
Which is the maintenance position?
Yeah. Yep. So it's, they're, they're both part-time.
Okay. Great. Well, it's really great. Tom, I don't know where else to put this in, but would you indulge me for a minute? Yeah, just a clarification, that one and a half includes you?
Yes.
Yeah.
Your one?
His one.
Okay.
Diane might think it's reversed, but I...
Diane's one, your half.
Yep. But you can take credit tonight.
Well, it just, very briefly, and this is to the board as much as anything else, it occurs to me that we have a tremendous benefit that comes from downtown. You know, we have, we've been working on trying to build this downtown as a community for, for a long time and I think it's kind of flipped in the past several decades. This downtown improvement district tax that's, that's enabled this to happen, I think was originally built on the premise that the downtown merchants were doing great and they were able to take this tax and improve their downtown. It feels to me like the rest of our town is getting a pretty good deal from this because the downtown is paying the tax for most of the work that you do. Most of your income comes from that. And it feels to me at some point that I would like this board to have a conversation about how much does the larger community of Bennington benefit from a strong, robust downtown? So it's not like a lot of the businesses are, are as strong as maybe they once were downtown and we're all, and we're lucky to have as many good businesses as we do downtown. But it feels to me like if we were to increase your work or increase your capacity to do work, it would come all on the backs of the people in the downtown improvement district. And, and that feels to me like it's sort of a disproportionate tax. It's, it's not just downtown that benefits from the work that you do, it's really our whole community. So I don't think we need to take any action on this tonight and I don't, I don't think it requires us to revisit the charter because this allows for the tax but doesn't mandate it. We could make a decision as a board later that we want to rejigger this, but it feels to me that we could stand to do something that might, that might look at the whole community as, as a whole organization and not just the downtown as the downtown and then everybody else. Arguably, work you do benefits many businesses outside of the downtown improvement district.
I should have brought that up a little stronger. The Grove Bennington Group, led by Lynn Green, is based on that premise of what you're talking about right now. She's set a budget for the forty-five initiatives that have been laid out and almost at the halfway point, and it's, the majority of the contributors are outside of the district and that's what her strong point is. Everybody benefits, benefits from a healthy downtown and it has been on the backs of the property owners down here. But she owns the business outside of the district and the vast majority of all the contributions coming in are from large organizations and individual residents who aren't property owners downtown, but realize the importance of it. So just reinforcing what you're saying. Lynn's making it up.
It feels to me as Vermont thinks more and more about what we want our communities to be, that this is a conversation we could have. And thank you for indulging me, board. I don't think we have to take any action on this tonight, but it's something I would like us to think about as we, as we move through, you know, our kind of marketing and where we put our money in the future. So again, thank you for all the good work that you're doing.
Good. I'd like to echo Donald's sentiments with respect to not taking any action tonight. But I first want to say, I guess the second thing that I want to say is I don't know how you do it all. How many people are, you know, doing these different things that try to improve the downtown?
It's a, it's a very small staff. It's basically one full-time person, John, two part-time people. One is, is, is an arrangement with the town of Bennington, Bill, who does a tremendous amount of maintenance and has been, you can really see the difference in downtown since Bill came on last year, right? But it's an extraordinary amount of work that, that John and Diane do and working with an extraordinary number of people and organizations. And I think one of the things as a board member of BDA that we're most proud of is when somebody has a good idea, or actually a bad idea in town, they come to, they come to John, they come to the BDA. And Grove Bennington is, is a perfect example of that. When the, when the, the land for the park at 336 was purchased, it came to BDA because they know that BDA gets things done and that it's an organization that is particularly good at working with others.
Well, again, I just want, I want to say thank you and wonder at how you get it all done. And a phrase that came to mind while Donald was speaking is that, you know, we're all in the boat together and it's important that we're all rowing in the same direction. And so many people like Grove Bennington and others have gotten on board and they're rowing with us now. Be that as it may, you know, there, there, there are people around town, particularly in, in social media and other platforms, where it's never enough. And we know that. We knew, anybody that's sat around this board, we know that that's the case. But I'm so proud of, every time I drive down Main Street and how pretty it looks, just about all year round. And the work that you do to keep it looking good. Now, the thing that I'd like to ask you about, John, and I'd like to, to give me a little history on it, is the destinationbennington.com. Can you give me a little history on that?
Sure. BetterBennington.com, which is our membership promotional website. It's, it's not the sleekest looking website, but it, it's very functional. It holds our membership in there. It allows us to have webpages.
You're talking about Destination Bennington?
No, I'm talking about Better Bennington. Why we also built Destination Bennington. So the Better Bennington is kind of a workhorse. I have pages for Grove Bennington, pages for the Arts Council, pages for events. And it also has codes so all the merchants can get a passcode into BetterBennington.com and they can manipulate their own listing. But it doesn't have a really sleek look to it. So we built Destination Bennington so it'd have a cleaner look and be a lot less, a lot more static. Because the Better Bennington site, we have to update fifty times a day if the information changes constantly. So Destination Bennington was built for us and we're actually even making it less information-packed so it doesn't have to be changed that often. But it's just another sales.
How old is it? How old is this site?
Two years, maybe?
Okay. Because I'm looking at it right here, John, and I've looked at it over the last several days and when I click on dining or shopping or lodging for particular places, there are none. There's no list.
We actually had all of them listed and then we got accused of having some wrong information for somebody that was, they, they closed or they changed the website or something. So we went and just blanked it all out until we go back in, but we're not going to list everybody anymore. We're going to list types of dining, types of entertainment.
And when do you plan to do that? When do you plan to do that?
It's an ongoing thing. That, cleaning that up, it's been happening the last couple of months.
Okay.
All the information that we put in there originally.
Yeah, because, you know, the one thing that is really well filled out is places to get your haircut.
Really?
Yeah.
It's just a page we missed, we're pulling all of that out.
Not that you need that, Jim.
Huh?
Not that you need that.
Shut up. I know I'm overdue. I'm overdue, I know.
We spent this for a whole summer, populated that whole thing. But Matt Harrington actually got us started on that plan.
Uh-huh. You know, I think that, you know, the importance of social media and reaching the markets that we want to reach is extremely important. And I think that, you know, when people type in Bennington and, and see where, what they can do and where they can go is really important. And I wonder if you've spent any time looking at Google Analytics to see, have you?
Yeah, for our side.
And what's, so can you give us a round idea of what kind of reach and how far and how wide the social...
Analytics doesn't tell me where it's coming from. They just tell me what pages they visit, how long they stay there, how, how many clicks they used in, in the days or the weeks that it happened. But it doesn't tell me who.
All right. Well, when we meet again, can you bring that in a hard copy so that we can look at that to see what kind of reach we have and how many hits you're getting with the different sites? I'd really be interested in knowing that.
Yeah. We don't do it with Destination Bennington, we only do it Better Bennington. Better Bennington, it'll actually tell me what merchants, who went in there and what they changed so that I know who to go after and say you haven't updated your hours or you have an old menu there or something.
So you're telling me that you can't take a measurement of where the hits are coming from?
On BetterBennington.com, I know who goes in there. I know, like Maru goes in and what she's done while she was in there. It'll, it gives you, they're just graphs that it gives you, like when there's been a lot of activity on her page and that usually happens like around a couple of weeks ago with Mayfest because we have an application for all of the vendors on Mayfest. So our page gets lots of spikes in the last forty-five to sixty...
So there's no way to tell where the, the hits are coming from?
No. Not the analytics we use.
No.
I don't think anybody, it'll tell you the addresses in, but I, addresses, I mean like site addresses, but not names of who's looking at.
No, not names in particular, just, you know, maybe locations, whether it's coming from North Carolina or...
Russia.
Russia.
Russia? Yeah.
No.
One in every grub.
Google can do it, but the analytics that we follow, we just look, because all we care about is which page is being viewed.
Okay. That's my major concern. I'd really like to see, you know, what kind of hits you're getting on social media and how far, and I'd love to know.
We don't look, even though it is social media, we separate our posts from social media.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Tomato, tomato.
Carson?
Thanks for the thorough presentation. I had the good fortune of working with you briefly when you were doing the downtown, getting the holiday decorations out until I had to evict you. The reason I evicted you was because we worked together and we were able to move the gift garden over to the vacant space that I had. So I appreciate that and apology for the eviction. But I do know how much work goes into that. I was amazed. I was ignorant to how much time, energy and effort you guys set forth and I couldn't believe how early you started and how much space you took up. I'm sorry.
On behalf of everybody, we're very sorry. But, but even as you're talking...
I understand the eviction.
Hey, John, it seems to me those lights that you acquired, is there's a history there, isn't there, of where these, those lights came from and how they got on the back of a truck? And why don't you just, you know, quickly, but I think it's interesting.
Those weren't the holiday lights. Those were the Grove Bennington winter lights. Lynn made me get in a rented truck and drive down to Philadelphia during a snowstorm. And while I was down there, it was, I turned to an ice storm and the wiper stopped working. But they made it back and the people we got it from were wonderful people and George Krosick allowed us to use his business space behind his old location and we got to store them all there and then football team came and helped us prep them all and get them ready and...
They looked great.
Yeah. That's a really impressive, I didn't mean to drop. It's a good...
It's okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead. But no, I appreciate your work in helping the gift garden move and I probably wouldn't have a tenant in my space down there if it wasn't, you know, for some of the effort you guys did. So thank you for that. I, I did have a question. Eric, it's probably more directed to you at the board level. And mind you, I haven't been on this board that long, but I don't know how many times in the past we've had, with the Bennington Downtown Alliance and then we have the Downtown Bennington Alliance. I think I said those both in the right order, who's presenting next? And excited to hear the differences, which I think is going to be important. Are we complimenting services? Are we mirroring kind of what's, what's to come so that them coming on next is important? But also kind of from a board level, and John, this isn't for you, kind of the thoughts on this in advance so we can kind of know where the board sits for us making kind of a financial decision going ahead? So can you share a little bit on that?
The budget that we work under is smaller than we would like. You'll probably be surprised to hear that. And I think you got an idea this evening of just how much this organization does. To cut that in any way would be a severe detriment. We are open to, and I think John showed it tonight, working with anybody and everybody. And any, anybody with new ideas, good ideas, we want to listen to them, we want to help them and we will take them under our wing. John is particularly good at that. What I would personally hate to see is competing organizations fighting over a relatively small pie and cutting it up into even smaller pieces. That's, I, I don't think that's the way to make progress. I think the way to make progress is to go with the organization that is doing really well, that is working with others and help it to continue that.
Okay. And as you said personally, I just wanted to be clear, so I would hope in advance of this, you, at the board level, you guys have kind of decided that's your thoughts on it as a, as a collective group, the hope would be one entity versus two?
Oh, absolutely, yes. Yes.
I just wanted to be clear.
Carson, I know that wasn't directed toward me, but I work with all the merchants downtown and like tonight's presentation as the downtown organization in the Vermont Downtown Program... Program, I actually think is very different than what the organization coming after me is asking for. That, I see more in line with the organizations that come before you, before the ballot comes out and want to go on the ballot. Because, and I'll use Ryan Hassett at Bringing You Vermont, for an example. He puts the movies on downtown, he brought the Haywagon to downtown, he does all sorts of promotions that benefit everybody downtown. Nick Monte at The Chocolate Shop does FunTastic Fridays. Jane Outwater at Naps puts music on the street. Linda and Phil at The Bookshop have, they bring in readers. DeBono's Ravioli does cooking classes. Everybody does promotional events. And if the select board is going to be looking at organizations that do events, I would want to encourage all of them to come to the select board. If you're doing something that's bringing people downtown, approach the select board. Start a not-for-profit, that doesn't take much, and then they could approach you. I look at that, all we are is a not-for-profit. I don't look at our reason for being here and our relationship with town, with the town and the other organizations, similar in which way to the other organization coming up this evening, or any more than I would if Ryan Hassett, or.
I just, I'm not trying to ask critical questions, but I think that's the point of this board at times. I mean, I completely appreciate everything you went through tonight, and I think you know how strongly I support every piece of what you're going through. I just think it draws, you know, some difficult questions, as a group with a similar name to you even, is about to approach us, asking for funding. And I just want to be kind of clear from a board level what your thoughts are on it. And, I mean, if I was, I could ask these things and say, you know, what did you do last Thursday, and, you know, how great the program has been over the last year, but I don't think that's my job up here. I just wanted to kind of hear your official position, and Eric did a great job in just somewhere.
We're a full-service organization. We don't just do a project or two.
That's all.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you for greeting me and welcoming me into your office when you probably have sixteen million things you should be doing. You're always willing to give me just a little bit of time whenever I stop by, unexpected and unannounced. So thanks for that. I thought I knew a lot, or almost everything of what your organization does, and clearly I was wrong. There's way more stuff that you do that I didn't know about. And I would venture to guess, no one in this room or listening at home knew all that you do. It's really, really amazing. I'm always interested in hearing from organizations such as yours, that if you had unlimited money and unlimited manpower, what is like this project that you've, or program, or something that you've always dreamed of being able to do? And maybe you can't think of it off the top of your head.
Got it.
Got it, okay. What would that be?
Right now, only because there's so much similar interest through the Grow Bennington Initiative, through some work we're doing with a new sign and design company downtown, and a local resident. Most of what we can affect is what's on the street, not so much within the businesses. We don't own the building, we don't, the buildings, we don't own the businesses. So it's hard for us to cross that line, except for a few situations. And as much as our streetscape really looks great, there's a lot of buildings that could use a lot of improvement, and help with design and help with material. And that is one of the projects that's coming up next with Grow Bennington.
And also the BRG.
And the BRG, which, Bennington Redevelopment Group is the project we're going to be working on with them. They're another one. It just seems like it's all coming together at one time. So we are going to focus on that. If we had unlimited funding to open up a matching grant program, or a no-interest loan program, to help people with facade work, awnings, plantings, it could really enhance the streetscape and all the work that's been done for the past twenty years on Main Street. We take it for granted what we see downtown, but it's always brought to my attention when people come to Bennington, is, oh, the town I'm from is now putting in the ribbons and the historic lamp posts, and the trees, and the benches, and it's just been that way for so long here, we take it for granted. But it is still the standard bearer when other communities are getting together and fixing up Main Street. So to answer the question is, funding for that facade program that we could really make it easier for the property owners and the businesses, the business owners to do their work.
I'm not surprised you had it at the tip of your tongue. So, and for you personally, and I'll include Diane as well, you know, the words, "I can't", "I don't have time", that's just not even in your vocabulary. So I just want to personally thank you. I don't have any questions.
About one follow-up. John, with these two organizations, you know, what the board is asking, well, what you two are asking us to do is to split the baby.
Not necessarily.
Well.
No.
In some form.
No, nope, not at all.
All right, well, anyway, it's just a hypothetical that I want to ask.
And it's not, actually, being specific, we're asking for a certain amount.
Yeah, yeah.
We asked, and twenty people asked, you could approve them all?
Yeah. But I'm, here's a hypothetical. Let's say that we were to grant this other organization a certain sum of money. Would you be willing to, because it sounds to me like you guys are really overburdened with what you do. And would you be willing to pass off some of those things and let them run with it?
Well, we're not overburdened, obviously because we're doing it. And there are lots of organizations doing, helping us and doing similar things to us. We just work with everybody.
I think, I think it's premature. Jim, let's listen to the presentation.
Okay.
And maybe you can ask that same question for. I don't think there's really any more questions that we would have at this point, unless there's someone that has.
No, you're going to do some citizen comment? So, what's your thought?
No. My comment at this particular point in time is to first, take a motion to accept and approve the request for seventy-seven thousand six ninety-four seventy-two.
Second?
Okay. Any more to support discussion? And are there citizens' comments?
I did hear you mention about the local motels and hotels. Do they have any information in their library about what the businesses are in downtown Bennington, or what's going on, or what type of company?
The motels themselves, do they have information about downtown? Most do.
Rack cards, most do.
Yeah, through rack cards and menus, but that's between, like, individual business owners and individual motel owners.
So there isn't a generic list that tells that you go to this one site, or this is a company?
Well, and I'll use two hotels, for example. One, The Hampton Inn, has a standard directory in its room. A smaller B&amp;B wants to do something a little differently, like have actual menu copies in their lobby, or brochures. So they each do it individually. And business, there's one standard rack card system in this area that the Shires of Vermont puts out. They're beautiful rack card systems. It's rack card, or information for Bennington County only. They're beautiful. We have one, The Chamber has one, there's Madison's, I think the museum, they're in certain areas. But each motel, bed and breakfast, or hotel controls what they carry and how they want to carry it.
They own the Chamber Guide, too.
And the Chamber Guide, which we use.
Which that's our number one market.
Just before Robert has a comment or a question. Have in mind, though, that the request for this seventy-seven thousand six ninety-four is basically through the town manager's office, who's created the budget. You know, so while the board is receiving the information tonight, the actual district annual budget will contain that number.
Actually, what happens is, if in fact, some of the money is approved tonight, either for one or both organizations, that in fact sets the tax rate for the downtown district.
Okay, good. Robert?
Yes, my name is Robert Ebert, resident of Bennington. I just wanted to emphasize a point that Tom Jacobs made rather quietly. And I'm not necessarily for or against anything, but the town charter that creates the downtown improvement district makes no requirement whatsoever that the select board contract with any vendor or service provider, in your pursuit of improving the vitality and quality of the district, you can decide from year to year how you would like to spend this money. You could use some of it to repaint the crosswalks downtown, so the district doesn't look quite so neglected and abandoned. You could use the money to help bring Park Thirty, Three Thirty-Six on Main Street to completion, to make improvements to Merchants Park on North Street. You could use this money to establish a walking police beat downtown to stop the drug dealers from selling poison on Main Street in broad daylight. You could use this money to help service a tax increment financing district improvement bond in the event that those improvements don't increase the values downtown enough to service that bond. You can use this money to express your own vision of what downtown should be, or could be. I don't know what kind of deadline you're working on in making this decision. It sounds like you've got about twenty seconds to make your decision. So this may be kind of moot for this year, but maybe next year. Those of you who are still with us on the select board, you might want to think about radically different ways to use this money. No reflection on the work that this group is doing. I think they do a great job. But there are other ways that you, as our elected representatives, could choose to use this money.
Thanks, Robert. And I think part of the process tonight is that we do have the ability to enter into contracts, as may be necessary to carry the purposes of that charter for that district. And I think that's the request that we're getting tonight.
Got a question in the back?
Yes, Lynn. Would you come up to the, so, I'm sorry, we can't, I have a mic to you.
My name is Lynn Green, and I am the chairperson of the Grow Bennington Initiative. I just want to say two things. One is, when I went to the BDA, I didn't really know what to expect, but they have just been amazing in being able to really make some of our projects come to life. And the second thing is, I'm really anxious to see what Joel and Joey and the Downtown Bennington Alliance have to say, because I think the more projects we have to try to improve Bennington, the better. But I do think there's somewhat false equivalence, because I do think the Bennington Downtown Alliance is really the designated district, like, I went to the redesignation of the district, and as far as taking in qualifying for grants, et cetera, and just the work they do with all of these organizations. I would, from what I read about, just in the paper, and what about what you're doing, while I applaud what you're doing, I think that's more similar to the Grow Bennington Initiative, or the Arts Council, or what Ryan Hassett does downtown, where we're all just trying to make downtown better, but working in partnership with the BDA. I think it's important to have one central organization that's as well-staffed and well-run as this one is. So while I applaud what you're doing, I do think there's somewhat false equivalence there. Just my opinion.
Okay. Thank you. Other citizens' comments? Okay. Somebody, I'll move the question if no one else will. I'll in favor of the arrangement contract with the BDA for seventy-seven thousand six ninety-four forty, seventy-two, signified by aye?
Aye.
And six in favor, and no abstentions, other than we'll see recusal in the record relative to Jeanne Jenkins. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next matter on the agenda, if I can find my agenda, is the Downtown Bennington Alliance funding. Good evening, Joel.
Hello. I'm Joel Luntz, president of the BDA. This is.
I'm Nick Disorda. I'm one of the member, one of the members on the board of the BDA.
Before we get going, Joel, so darn, using that in public session, BDA, DBA, why, why this name? Why, it seems pretty confusing to all of us.
It has, I think it has the potential to be confusing. I think it is confusing. So to explain that, I think I have to go back into the history a little bit of our group. Let me.
And I don't mean to interrupt your presentation, because I know you have planned out, but it's like, this is, every time I look at it, I have to figure, am I talking about the BDA or the DBA?
Sometimes I get confused and want to say the other group. No, it's true. So this is what happened. Let me, let me kind of get into, because the first part of what I wanted to talk about tonight was the history of our group. And I'll branch off, just give me one minute, and I'll branch off to answer your question.
Okay, great. Go ahead, Joe.
We're fortunate to have two downtown organizations so vested in the success of Bennington. The BBC, BDA, has a long history of hosting popular downtown events, running the downtown welcome center, and participating in Main Street beautification projects. These are all integral components of our downtown, and I completely support our DID taxes being used for those pursuits by the BDA. However, downtown marketing and advertising have historically fallen through the cracks. It's a task which several entities, BBC, The Chamber, BRC, and even the town itself, has some peripheral association with. But their scope is broad, whereas the BDA's scope is quite narrow. It's only marketing and advertising for downtown. So the, the reason, the cause that our organization started was this lack of marketing and advertising, which we believe hurts our ability to have foot traffic downtown, which hurts all of our businesses. And I think you can draw the conclusion that the lack of foot traffic that we've seen over the past years has had some cause with stores going out of business and the empty storefronts that we have now. So in two thousand fourteen, a group of six, over sixty downtown business owners, including the town manager and the then economic development director, met at Fiddlehead to discuss this issue. This was back in two thousand fourteen. We, our discussion mainly centered around the lack of advertising and marketing, and how to address diminishing foot traffic on Main Street. Some of those in attendance started meeting infrequently at first, but then steady over time, and became more organized. We decided early on that we liked the name DBA because of the common acronym in business of doing business. So we wanted to use doing business as Bennington. And we found that the Downtown Bennington Alliance was kind of an acronym that fit into DBA Bennington. We've been using this as a working thing since two thousand fifteen, as a working name. We didn't apply for nonprofit status until two thousand, until last year, two thousand In the middle of that time, we heard that the old BBC was changing their name to the BDA. It was, to us, their way of competing with us, and I'm not, I don't know that this is true. But then we started hearing, well, they stole our name. And we all said to ourselves, yeah, but we've been using this for over a year. Who stole? I didn't really want to get into that, because I think it's, it's something I'd like to let go. Honestly, I don't care what our name is. We can call ourselves SAM. It doesn't matter to me. ourselves Sam. It doesn't matter to me. Our mission is what's important to me, is that we're able to accomplish what we're wanting to accomplish. So...
Okay.
Yes, I think it's confusing. If we all want to sit down and talk about that, I think we should talk about it. But I'd like to move forward, because I think there's a lot more important things going on than simply the name.
Just so I understand, though, the Downtown Bennington Alliance registered or became a not-for-profit entity back a year, a year ago?
About a year ago, yep.
Okay. And so, it's registered with the Secretary of State as a not-for-profit?
We are, yep.
Does it have a 501(c)(3) or other exemption?
We're not a 501(c)(3).
Or five, any 501?
I mean, I have to ask the, our attorney on the board. He was out of town and couldn't make it here tonight, but he knows more of that than I do.
Okay. But for the state, you're a not-for-profit entity?
For the state of Vermont, we are a non-profit entity, absolutely.
Thanks.
Yeah, the paperwork's all been filled out and paid for and so forth. Yeah, we're all set. We also have bylaws that we're just about to ratify. We have a full board of nine, nine members. So, anyway, let me...
We can come back to organization.
Yeah, get back.
Yep.
So, let's see. We applied for nonprofit status. We started building our membership with $1 membership dues. Why $1 membership dues? Because our sense is that downtown merchants have been taxed enough. I pay around $500 a year for the Downtown Improvement District tax, which I'm happy to do, because I think it's important to have a buy-in, to have skin in the game, in terms of what's revitalization of our Main Street. It's why I bought my building and opened my business 19 years ago, because I believe in downtown Bennington. So, the way we envision this organization was something that can help a very specific problem that most Main Street merchants are facing, which is diminishing foot traffic. Our solution to that, since we can't close down the bypass as much as we'd like to, is to increase marketing and advertising. We have regional advertising through The Chamber that covers north of Manchester to Bennington. It's the whole region, the Shires. There's really no organization that has taken the downtown piece and developed a full marketing strategy. That's what we're, that's what we've been doing over the past year, not just developing it, but implementing it. So, I'd like to go through, first, the events that we've held this past year. One of the first ones that we, was Garlic Fest, our first major event. We partnered with The Chamber on this, and Garlic Quest was a scavenger hunt, using Bennington businesses as clues, drawing people to downtown. The grand prize was an Apple iWatch, and there were many runner-up prizes donated by local businesses. It was a successful promotion, and we've already started discussing Garlic Quest 2 with The Chamber for this year. What we saw was this enormous opportunity where you have about 15,000 people coming to town every year for Garlic Fest, but that doesn't really translate into an increase in business downtown. A lot of those people aren't coming downtown. We saw this as a perfect opportunity to do precisely what we've been talking about doing, and that's increasing the foot traffic. You already have them a mile down the road. We simply need to lure people down to Main Street. So, we came up with, and these are the questions that people filled out. Each question had something to do with a local business that either drew them to the business or drew them to their website. What is NAP's internet message? Identify three of our signature items at South Street Cafe, things like that. And what we found is, we had a lot of local people taking advantage of this, and a lot more of the, as many of the entries were local as they were out of town. So, what we're working on this year is how to draw the out-of-towners more in addition to the locals. So, that was Garlic Quest. I think it was a successful promotion in that it helped local people re-identify with stores on Main Street that they might not have been into in a long time, had never been into, and I'm excited to do it again this year, hoping to have a slightly larger prize and more reach in terms of how we publicize the event. Maybe our most effective tool so far have been Facebook posts. We've developed a robust social media presence. We've written 40-plus and counting feature stories about member businesses. Stories are professionally written by a 20-year veteran newspaper editor, and the feature stories create not only exposure, but also a direct increase in sales and an excellent return on investment. B&amp;B Auto saw 30 customers taking advantage of an oil change offer they made in their feature story. TJ's Fish Fry had over 100 people take advantage of their special feature story promotion. The feature stories, they're not just for the exposure. They also are utilized by our member businesses in other ways, in secondary ways. They link their stories to their own websites, to their social media platforms. We found that these in-depth stories make a personal connection to our local businesses, showing that they're family businesses. You know, one of the things when you look at Bennington as opposed to, say, Manchester, is we have the preponderance on Main Street of mom-and-pop businesses as opposed to chain, national chain stores in other towns. This is a strength that needs to be played on, and I think that these feature stories develop that personal side of things. So, so far, they've been extremely effective. The key to social media, but especially Facebook, as you probably know, is you've got to boost your posts. It's great when you post something and then friends share it, but if, unless you're spending money to boost those posts, you're only getting very limited reach. That's the design of Facebook. That's why they make billions of dollars. We've had limited funds to be able to boost our posts. Regardless, we've had enormous reach. I think 108,000 impressions in the past year on our stories. If we were to be able to boost the posts more than $5 apiece, it would get exponentially more reach, which means that you'd be able to get outside of Bennington to have people reading these stories and hearing about Bennington and shopping and restaurants and hotels downtown. We also, back over the summer, we hosted a free workshop on web SEO led by digital Firefly Marketing, which was extremely helpful for many businesses, like my own, who do their own SEO. I can tell you that, from what we've learned, it is entirely possible to track on your website who has visited your website. No, you don't get their name. You get what continent, what city. You can even get IP addresses if you know how to do it correctly. There's Google Analytics, and somebody like Nancy Cozial, who's on our board, they're able to do with Google Analytics things that I don't personally understand. But she explained in a very basic way, I guess, what we're not doing and the potential of what we might be doing. And a lot of, a lot of the businesses that showed up to the workshop have implemented those, those strategies now. So, our, I guess, maybe flashiest promotion to date was certainly our New Year's Eve in New York City with Phish Promotion. The grand prize was two tickets to see the Vermont band Phish at Madison Square Garden on New Year's Eve, and a night at the Marriott Renaissance in New York. The rules were pretty straightforward. If you spent $10 at any DBA member business, you'd receive a raffle ticket. Almost 1,000 people entered, and the promotion received considerable media coverage. Not only was the promotion shared by the official Phish Facebook page, which was seen worldwide, but Albany Channel 10 ABC News sent a news crew out for live coverage of the event and to interview five of our business owners in their stores during the crucial holiday sales period. This was enormous for us, and we didn't really expect this. We sent out press releases to all the news organizations about this event, and when we heard that ABC News was sending a crew out, it was like the golden ticket. And it was phenomenal coverage, not only for the five people who got these great personalized interviews in their stores, but it also brought tremendous exposure to Bennington as a place to shop and eat for our regional audience, the Albany market that we so badly want to tap. Let's see. Nick?
Yeah. So, essentially, I joined this board, I was asked to join the board, and what I, you know, when I was looking at the board, I'm really noticing that with this board, they're going out and really making sure that they're representing the local business, you know, the downtown business, and just, you know, stories about local businesses. You know, you're not going to find stories about Chili's and everything like that, but really, there's a focus on the group of what they're trying to do. And I think, you know, the BDA is doing a great job of doing a lot of different things. I mean, you saw that, you saw what they're doing. It's everything. It's, there's a lot of great things. And with this group, we're focused. We're, you know, mostly composed of business owners on the board. We run, you know, we don't have a hierarchy of, you know, of our infrastructure isn't really set up with, with a big committee to go through all these channels. When we set our mind to something and we decide what we're going to do to support the downtown, we just get right to it. It's really efficient, and efficiency is kind of, you know, key with social media promotions and, and, you know, writing these stories and doing the promotions. You know, a lot of these promotions, you know, really bring a wide demographic of people to the Bennington websites, you know, whether it's just ours or just in general. They're interested in Bennington, and I think that's the overarching theme that I'm hearing tonight. This is also my first board meeting, so this is really interesting for them. But what I'm hearing is everyone kind of wants to bring business to downtown. And I think, you know, in a perfect world where there's just unlimited budget, yeah, I think we could all work together and, and have enough money to do all these things, but we do need to have the ability to focus the attention that we're looking to do for specifically downtown Bennington and the businesses. And essentially, I think that the BDA is able to do that with very little funding, and you see, like Joel said, a huge ROI. There's a huge return on investment for, for what we're doing. I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty great.
So, just to go over specifically what we, what we plan to spend, what we, what our priorities are for the coming year. We're looking to expand Garlic Quest 2. We want to use the Facebook stories that we already have, the feature stories, and develop them into a feature stories project. And I guess this is, it's a little hard to explain, but it, part of developing this feature story project involves us, at some point, shutting down our website, and perhaps others in town doing the same. What we found, if you look at Bennington online, there are numerous websites. There's a Chamber website, there's two BBC websites, there's our website, there's websites about Bennington that are run by private citizens. It's confusing if you look at it from a tourist perspective. We would like, we think the strongest part, and, you know, I think our website's great. I think other websites are great, too. We really just need one, and I'd be happy for it to be not ours or, it doesn't matter to me, as long as we get something that really works for all of us. So, what we want to do is, if we can put this collaborative effort of one website together, as our piece, we would like to have 50 stories, 60 stories about Bennington as a piece of this collaborative website. I think the list of all the businesses, of all the projects, of all the events, those are all things that can be accomplished by other organizations. We've done something that's very unique, and I think it could be helpful down the line if, in fact, we were able to develop this one uni, web, universal website. So, there's a piece in our budget for developing how to do these 50 stories if we can ever come to this kind of shared thing. If not, we'll do it on our own, because I think it's an important marketing tool that shows that we're a community of merchants and a community of small mom-and-pop family merchants. It tells a story of people in town. If you haven't read the stories, take a look on our Facebook page. They're, they're really pretty intriguing. We have money that we're dedicating towards boosting the Facebook posts, like I already explained. We had a great reach. We could have an exponentially better reach if we had funds to boost the posts. We have a, I can't tell you what the grand prize is yet, but we have a very special idea for our holiday promotion this coming year. We did Phish last year, and we've got something entirely different planned for this holiday time that I think will also get some very dynamic and regional spotlights on Bennington because of the prize. So, our goal overall is to help each other promote and advertise our downtown, because we believe a vibrant downtown benefits everyone in town. So far, we've had really positive feedback. We've been honored with donations from local businesses to continue our work. We've hosted events. We've developed a large social media presence, and even received regional television coverage. We do all of this without any paid staff or office expenses. Everything we raise goes directly into marketing. What we're asking for today is a very small portion of the downtown tax funds, 4,500, about 5.8% of the overall DID funds available, which is about 4.5%, including in-kind town assistance. It's a small amount. This request will enable the BDA to continue with its interactive and effective downtown marketing, which benefits the entire town. The downtown taxing district funds are intended to be used, in part, for marketing like this. Hopefully, we've demonstrated the BDA would be effective in utilizing them for that purpose. But I think it's important for this board to hear from those whom we serve. And I'd like to play a very short video that we put together earlier today. Some of our neighbors, I'm going to try to put it in a place where we can all, someone see. I wasn't too sure about the, whether we can get the large screen to work, because I know there's been problems in the past, so we brought it around.
Good luck.
Yeah, this room's jinxed.
It is. I'm sure Mike can...
Hi, I'm Heather Maston of Ringing in Vermont and Bennington Pizza House, and I'm really excited to have the initiatives that the BDA has supported through trainings and network activities, and I hope that they will support that with some of the DIT money.
Hi, I'm Mike. I'm a ranger's gallery on Main Street, and I just want to say that I support what the BDA is doing, and that they are helping downtown, helping downtown businesses. I'd like to see the Select Board give them part of the portions of this voyage towards downtown revitalization and building it up. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Outwater. I'm on NAP's Music Toys and Hobbies in Bennington. The BDA in the last year has done a lot of wonderful things that have benefited our business, and I would be on board with the Select Board allocating DID funds that they are investing in pursuit of their ideas that have been very helpful to the downtown.
Hi, I'm Sean Sherwood, owner of Revolution Bank of Crystal. We've been doing the TDA for a year now. They're doing a great job. I'd be like to ask the Select Board to help financially with the BDA. Thank you.
This is David Schaff from Schaff's Men Shop. I'm here with my brother Sam, and I just want to say that I support the efforts that the Downtown Bennington Alliance has done. has done over the past year. It's the organization that's been in effect about a year. They did have a couple of great events and I think that the funding that they're asking for is really not a significant amount, but I think it would help them and help us downtown to do some of the events that they've undertaken in the past year.
Hi, I'm Jessica Nelly-Belly. I just want to say the DDA has been doing a very good job this year. Select Board, I'll give it $4,500. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nathan Littlebrun and I'd like you to consider funding the DDA's request of the $4,500 this year. We really appreciate it, they've been doing for us and look forward to another successful year.
Hi, my name is Betsy Greenwell, homeowner of It's Emily Holy Cow and we really hope this select board will fund the Downtown Bennington Alliance's request of $4,500 to help them continue their initiatives in promoting our wonderful downtown and getting foot traffic to our Main Street. Thank you very much.
Hey, everyone, I'm Ryan from CL White Glass. I'm just here to tell you that I appreciate everything the DDA is doing in downtown and what they plan to do in 2018 and hopefully you guys can fund their requests. Thank you.
Hi, this is Lisa from Leven and we really appreciate all that the DDA has done for us and we really hope that you will fund their requests.
Hi, I'm Susan Armstrong. I own Armstrong Dulers on Main Street and I want to thank the DDA for the help that they've given us this year. One was a live interview on Channel 10, which was very exciting. And the other was Joey Calkin coming to our store, taking, he must have taken 50 pictures and put our story on Facebook and we appreciate that. And I would hope that you could honor their request for some financial assistance this year. Thank you.
Hey, this is Donnie Wassett-Teyer and we are hoping the select board will consider the $4,500 request to keep the DDA doing all the great things they're doing.
So we thought it was important to really, for you to hear what our neighbors and fellow business owners were thinking and how we've, whether we've earned their dollar over the So I guess at this point, I'd love to take any questions.
Sure.
There are a couple more things I was going to say, but let's get into some specific questions.
Yep. I think that's a really good idea, considering the time for both of your presentations tonight, which have been very appropriate and I appreciate the effort on both parties. It's interesting, downtown improvement district funding, I think that's a really a misnomer and probably shouldn't have been characterized that way relative to our agenda. Because what we're hearing tonight is particularly from some of your folks, they're not even in the tax district, you know? They're, and what you're talking about is a campaign that you started approximately a year ago, which is basically a marketing and advertising campaign for Bennington.
No, I correct you on that, it's...
Before I get, before you respond, okay? Let me finish because we listen to you. This is a campaign for Bennington, downtown Bennington, and Bennington proper is broader than the just tax district. And as I understand some of these fine folks' statements, they're wanting support under the downtown improvement district funding. And frankly, I have some problems with that tonight if that's what we're considering. If we're hearing a request for $4,500 to consider, to help in a downtown marketing and advertising campaign because it appears to be successful, that's another thing. But I think there are two different presentations that we had tonight. One was for the downtown improvement district and another one that's broader than that. Go ahead, Joel.
I think, and perhaps Nick can speak to this, we are solely focused on downtown Bennington. Our membership does include people outside of the DID taxing district, but the reason that they're involved is because they believe in a strong downtown.
Yeah, no, I agree. I think, I think it's, you know, it's focusing business to Bennington when people come to Bennington. The reason why we're doing a lot of these promotions is to bring people to downtown, which yes, of course, is great for everybody in the Bennington district, but we're focusing on trying to drive people to Main Street Bennington.
So the way we look at, I think another way to look at the DID funds and what you're talking about in terms of having one organization be the organization that everything else passes through, it's actually in contradiction to what the Vermont State Auditor suggests in terms of subcontractors. The Vermont State Auditor published a recent report titled "Soul Source Contracts: Extraordinary Use in Extraordinary," sorry, "Extraordinary Use in Ordinary Times," about how soul source contracts using public taxes are intended for emergency and temporary situations. When soul source contracts become tradition and part of the culture, they risk loss of accountability or a competitive bidding process, which is in essence what we're having here today. We're not, the DDA is not interested in running a welcome center or being the designated downtown organization or planting flowers or stepping on any of the things, the successful things that the BBC does. We're interested in addressing something that has not been addressed for years, that this board excoriated the BBC last year for not doing. I believe Mr. Carroll, I don't have his comments written down, but said that marketing and advertising was something the BBC really needed to work on over, just to paraphrase, over the coming year. We have, instead of planning for it, we've taken action for it because we think it's so vital not to lose any more of our Main Street businesses and vital to continue to grow in the way that Main Street should. So what we're asking for is for you to look at these funds as funds that can be delineated by different jobs and tasks. If you had a, if you say wanted to do a new website for every, for all of downtown and make it just one universal website, your funds could be used to pay a web-based, a web company, a web developer to do that website in the same way that you could give funds to us, DID tax funds, to support advertising and marketing the downtown district. It's just taking certain tasks and subcontracting them to different people instead of making the BBC the sole recipient for the past 25 years.
Okay. Just a couple of things before I ask my colleagues to enter the discussion. The organization was created in 2017, it's a not-for-profit. It has a board of, and you listed their individual, is that board, when was that board created?
There are some people that have been on the board for a year, over a year, because we've been in existence well over a year. We just filed papers with the state for nonprofit a year ago. And there's others who have just joined four months ago.
Okay. And do you have bylaws?
Yes. They haven't been ratified yet. Our attorney, also a board member, wrote up the bylaws and we need to make some edits and vote on it.
How often do you meet as a board?
I'm sorry?
How often do you meet as a board?
Once a month. Oh, you say how...
How often do you meet?
Well, once a month.
Convene.
I'm sorry, I thought you said how long. Once a month.
And who are the officers of the organization?
We can't, we have an acting secretary who's Peter Lawrence. I'm the acting president and the rest of the board we're waiting to vote on until all our bylaws are ratified.
Okay. And the financing for the entity from the date of its inception, where are those funds, where'd they come from?
We were very fortunate that a lot of businesses donated more than a dollar. We wanted it to be a dollar, but we were very, we were very lucky that people donated more than that.
Do, your dues are a dollar? Does that continuing to be the case?
Absolutely.
How many dues-paying members do you have?
There are, one second, 60 businesses and 15 individuals.
And what fundraising activities have you undertaken as an organization from 2017 to now?
We had a, an event last June, Mayor June, it was 16 beers on the 16th, I think of June, that was partially sponsored by the Tap House and that was a successful fundraiser. The beer was free, but we ended up, people were making donations, which was nice for our organization.
So how much did you raise prior to this budget that you presented tonight? How much total?
We raised in the neighborhood of $2,000.
$2,000?
$2,000.
So your plan for this year is much more expanded?
It is. One of the things, we have one, one project that I haven't discussed here tonight because we just, our board's been discussing it, but we just brought others into, into the fold two, three weeks ago. We had a meeting with the Chamber, the BBC and the town and there were representatives from all those organizations there where we discussed kind of an exciting marketing project that we'd like to undertake. And part of that was a very large, it's something that has been batted around for a long time and the lacking piece was the fundraising. So we discussed how to fundraise for this. And I guess there's a piece of the puzzle that I should bring in here. We really, part of the reason, we could have potentially done this project ourselves, part of the reason we went to the Chamber and went to the BBC is we believed, like what we were talking about earlier, that these partnerships were important, that there are some things, some things, some small things we can do ourselves. Larger things are really important to bring all the players together because then you have, you have a greater vision, you have greater buy-in from everyone. So we met about this marketing idea a few weeks ago and I was surprised actually that to get a letter from the president of the BBC who said basically that they're committed, they have a lot on their plate right now with fundraising for the park at 336, the Merchants Park, and a number of other things and they couldn't commit to any further, they couldn't commit their board to any further fundraising. That was a disappointment and a bit of a surprise because I was hoping that this might be a catalyst for working together and perhaps there will be other opportunities for us to work together, but I guess I'm bringing it up as an example of just because you want to do something and it's a great idea and you have buy-in, it doesn't necessarily mean that the BBC is going to want to partner with you. It's great that they've partnered with Grove Bennington and we all know all the things that Grove Bennington has accomplished, but that doesn't necessarily mean that every organization has to flow through the BBC.
But you were asking them for money, it sounds like.
What's that?
You were asking them for money?
No, we were asking them to be a part, sorry.
No, go ahead.
To be a part of this project and to do this fundraising event with the Chamber, with us, BBC, all as three, and then it would be really big instead of just one organization fundraising for this marketing idea.
Again, your discussion tonight seems to me, it's a presentation of filling a void that you don't see being dealt with, and that's downtown marketing and advertising. You've heard all of the other things from the other organization, from the BCA and now DDA. See? So long and short of it is, you're basically a fundraising advertising organization doing it at a not-for-profit basis, supporting the downtown. And that downtown probably is something...
Greater than downtown, yeah.
Exactly.
Looking at these posts, I would say it's all over Bennington.
Yeah. So this request, the $4,500, is to basically fund that activity. There's not much else because I hear tonight it's basically marketing and advertising. And if the town wanted to, it could engage a contractor through a contract to perform those same activities. And you're saying that we can do it.
We've done it and we'd like to continue to do it.
Okay. Okay. Chad?
Thanks. So over the years, I've enjoyed the feature stories that you guys have done. You have a great writer and I think it gets the personal touch to it, but recently I'm about 99% removed from Facebook. So for those people that are now off of Facebook, is this, like, is that what you're trying to say, like you're going to reach out on other places besides Facebook or?
That's exactly it. I think that we want to take what we've written for Facebook, these feature stories, and use them in another format. What I'm hoping, I think the most ideal thing is that we work to do this universal website that covers downtown, whether that's a Chamber website with a tab that's the only tab to go to downtown. However that looks, I think that's something that the organizations can all discuss, but I'd like to see our stories be a component of that because I think it's a great marketing tool. And then once it's on the web, on the website instead of Facebook, then you really have a much wider reach.
And how would you then promote that website? Is there other avenues or?
Out of my, I think that's something that if we get the Chamber and the BBC together and buy into this idea of one website, that we, the professionals do that.
Okay. Thank you.
I, yeah, I have so many questions for you, Joel. Well, both of you, thank you for being here tonight. But certainly that one of the feature stories project and the collaborative website thing, I didn't understand exactly what you were suggesting there. Were you saying that you want to start an initiative to bring several websites into one website? Is that what you were suggesting or were you suggesting creating your own features, feature website?
No. I'd like there to be one website so when people type in Bennington and are looking for activities in Bennington, I'd like them to just come to one place. I don't need the DDA to do that and frankly, it's not, we don't have anyone who could spearhead that. What I'd rather do is initiate, and maybe initiate simply means I'm talking about it tonight and other people take it over. I'd like to initiate a discussion with the Chamber, with the town, with the DDA and ourselves about how to have just one universal website. In that website, I'd love for all of our stories, the 40 stories we've written so far, the 20 we're yet to write, I'd like those to be on that website because I think if other people agree, it's a great marketing tool for selling, a very unique marketing tool for selling business, for promoting retail and restaurants.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff in that, well, yeah, not to pick. There's a lot of stuff in the town website that probably, the town should have its own website. Now, we should probably have a website where you can go for planning and zoning and where you can go for permitting and where you can go for a lot of other nuts and bolts things that might drag down a promotional website, it feels to me, but that's just my opinion, sorry. You know, one of the things that concerns me as a sharp pencil guy is that I'm used to seeing a lot more of a budget than this. I get that this is, you're new and you're just kind of getting started with this, but you know, I'd love to, I'd love to know more about, where does the $10,000 go for the multi-organizational advertising campaign? You know, sort of, I'd like to see something that looks a little bit more like a real budget before we commit funds to this. And one of the reasons is that I think we're, we've already voted on and approved the DDA's budget and we're planning, we just did that. So now would be, if we were using DID funds, we'd be looking at an additional tax on downtown merchants. So at this point, that's what we'd be looking at. And if we, if we want to go that route, I think we have to really be very careful about what we're getting for the money, for one thing. And also, you know, Joel, I think you'll understand this, but not to set a precedent where we would have a lot of different people coming in, making requests like this of the select board. In my ideal, we would be following the charter, which calls for a, either the town manager or a designated authority to sort this stuff out so that we didn't end up having multiple requests coming to the select board for $2,000 here, $10,000 there, $5,000 here, $45,000 there. So I guess I'd like to give you the opportunity to break this budget down a little bit more if you could. You know, staff, insurance... You know, staff, insurance, you know, whatever you can do to help us understand where this money would go, and why we should, why we should do this additional tax.
When we contacted the town about this process, we asked if there was a specific process, specific things that the select board might be looking for, if there was a form to fill out, we got none of that information. So, I'd be happy to provide things to you. I think that, to answer one of your questions, staff, office supplies, insurance, none of those are paid for with any of these funds. We want that, what we were hoping, because we, we believe that the DID funds should be used to pay for this, because it's not being done. I was a little disappointed that you voted on the BDA's proposal without hearing ours first, because I think there was a potential, especially with a two percent raise that the BDA got this year, that we might have split, that some of that money, like I said, five point eight percent, might have gone to the BDA, but you've already given that money to the BDA. However, whatever, for whatever reason that was designed, we're now at a position where we're no longer asking for DID funds, although we had intended to. I think that's unfortunate.
To be clear, I was never going to vote for a decrease, you know, based on the work plans we've seen year after year after year from the Bank and Downtown Alliance, and the amount of work they're doing, I was, I was never going to support a decrease in their budget. I actually, as you heard, would like to push for an increase in the-
Fiscal year next year.
Fiscal year next year, if we can get there. I was actually struggling over BDA and DDA in my mind, I always get locked up on that. You know, so, so I'm not going to be apologetic for that, Joel. You know, I do feel like the Bennington Downtown Alliance, we get a tremendous bang for the buck from them, but if it's, if this is worth it, and if this is worthwhile to the downtown merchants, then we are in a position where we could simply add it on-
With the budget, not to the DID, because I don't think what has been presented tonight is limited to the Downtown Improvement District.
Well, it's true, that it feels a little bit more like the Chamber, or it feels a little bit more, I mean, Matt, I'm not sure, some of this stuff is, is well out of the DID, and it looks, it looks good, you know? Some of this stuff looks like a really nice Facebook presence. You know, I get it, you gave us a good presentation here, it's, you know, one, one sort of page of budget and description and forty-seven screenshots of Facebook, which is, which is what you're saying, is that we need to have more Facebook presence. But it feels to me a little bit like this is, and we did hear, we did hear several downtown merchants say they think it's worth supporting. We did hear a number in their video, I'm not sure-
Two or three were in the DID.
They weren't in the DID, but I'm not sure if that meant they would like to see the BDA reduced, or if they meant they'd like to pay a higher tax, or the DID to pay a higher tax.
We might want to take a second to clarify where these tax dollars are coming from. Stuart, do you want to just elaborate on that for a little bit? Where are these funds coming from, where are they derived?
The ID.
Well, the Downtown Improvement District is a district that was established by Charter and has a map, very similar to the designated downtown map, and the businesses in that district are taxed for services to maintain and improve the downtown. At the present time, residential properties are exempt from the tax, so the town is charged with breaking out the business portion of buildings and properties to allocate grand lists for the tax purposes. There is nothing, there's nothing to say that one, two, or three different organizations could access those Downtown Improvement District dollars. It really is, it's a process that has been a sole-sourced contract for the designated downtown organization, but there's nothing to say that others can't ask, as the Downtown Bank and Alliance is, for additional funding beyond what is provided to the designated downtown organization. So, it really is-
Just, just for clarification, though, if we decide to approve both, that increases the tax burden within the Tax Improvement District.
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
About how much would that forty-five hundred affect the tax rate per individual? That's tough.
Afraid that question might come up, I don't know. I don't know what the downtown district grand list is at the present time. It is increasing with some of the new construction and new additions to the downtown, so, but I can't tell you what impact this would have. It would not be, it would not be large, but it would certainly impact it. I mean, currently, the taxes, I think the tax rate's around fifteen or sixteen cents, and I'm guessing, based on my past-
Chad?
Yeah, I just think it's important to remember where these dollars are coming from.
Right.
I think Joel's a business owner and a building owner in the same space, a lot of these are separated from the two, merchants occupying spaces versus business owners not owning their buildings. I just think it's important to recognize that. The amount of money, it's not my turn yet, so, do you want me to-
No, go ahead. Yeah, we're fine, come back. We're flexible. Jim's flexible.
So, all mine aren't questions, there's some comments and some questions. It's interesting to see Nick on as a board member. Nick doesn't really have, that I know, a vested interest in this, so, he doesn't really have a horse in the, in the race right now, but it's nice that he's up here and commenting. You certainly do, Joel, on a lot of fronts. And my point is here, promote and advertise the downtown. It's great, and I know you guys are successfully doing that. In commenting tonight, you're kind of, correct me if I'm wrong, you're making a very strong, kind of not, I hate using the word acquisition, but you're saying the idea of Bennington Downtown Alliance is currently not fulfilling that, in your opinion?
In marketing and advertising.
In the marketing and advertising space. So they're not fulfilling, in your mind, one bucket of their, their kind of annual goals or mission?
Correct.
And the Chamber too, right? By association, because the Chamber presumably could be doing some of this stuff.
They could. I've had this discussion with Jonah, and, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, but my understanding is, he feels that their plate is really full as a regional marketing organization, and it's not that they don't have a desire, or might not ever, but they have not put their eggs in the downtown basket, because there's so much, their purview is so much broader.
And I'm not faulting you for, you have any opinion, it's fine, I don't think everyone does everything great either. I just, I think right now, my only concern is, is the idea of, and it kind of was in the opening when we talked about the name, it's the, it's the us versus them, it's the, it's the lack of not working together that gives me some serious concern. And, and I don't know how to navigate that perfectly, and I think we've set ourselves up tonight to, if we vote these dollars through, we're almost insulting one group, if we don't vote them through, we're insulting the other. So unfortunately, you've successfully put us in a really tough spot, which I'm okay with, I'm going to vote one way or the other, I'm sure we're going to push it off to the next meeting or do something, but this is already setting up to not end the way I'd like it to, which is, you have a lot of people on that screen that you showed us tonight that by us not voting for those dollars, they're going to assume that we don't necessarily support downtown businesses, which isn't the goal here. It's kind of to say, okay, if the Bennington Downtown Alliance is falling short on the promotion and advertising of the downtown, I, I, creating another group that's necessarily, like, competing for that space, I don't like that setup, and I would rather have it maybe in parallel or partnership, but it seems like that, that isn't working, and I don't, I mean, I can, I can give a lot of my own opinions on why that's not working, whether it be personality conflicts or other functions, but that's not why we're here. I just think we need to kind of figure out something. There wasn't a question on that, I said I'd give some comments first, those are some of them, hopefully I didn't put too much. Lynn had commented very early on, when Bennington Downtown Alliance was still up there, it was commented, a trending fund of some sort, so, if we're going to start putting funds towards a portion of, of a promotion and advertising of the downtown, similar to how the, another entity is actually doing kind of a similar function, is promoting the downtown, I'm failing miserably here. Lynn, what's the name of the group?
Gro Bennington.
Yeah, Gro Bennington. It seems like we're going to have a lot of initiatives that are going to come forward asking for these tax dollars, which maybe that's a goal that you guys are trying to promote here, but it just seems like a slippery slope that we're getting on. I don't know if that's just shared opinion or not, it just, it makes me nervous if we say yes to the first one.
We're on the same page, you and I, so, you know, designated entities sort of sorting this out, is what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I just, I get nervous, it just reminds me of, of a couple other requests that we had come in front of us, and saying yes to this one is going to open up the door for somebody who else maybe thinks they can run events better in the downtown. But, and I know it's a trivial amount of money, a forty-five hundred dollars, but it's, it's kind of the thought process behind, for me, is a little bit more in-depth than just the dollars here.
Well, we could give the money to the BDA and ask your group to be a project at the BDA.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like, based on the, just the name difficulties, it sounds like maybe it will work or it won't work. I don't know, what do you think?
I think the name difficulties are red, Eric.
Yeah.
So, let's address what's important. We have a deficit, whether it's a deficit that I perceive, or a deficit that everyone perceives. What I started out in saying is that I had a meeting at Fiddlehead in 2014, four years ago now, where the main topic of discussion was lack of advertising and marketing. We pleaded with the town, and Stu was there, that this is something that needed to happen. There was one person, you might remember this, Stu, who piped up and yelled back at me and other people in the room that, "You people have to get organized! You can't just be talking here, you got to get organized!" You even thanked him, so, I'm not usually thankful for things that this person said, but I am thankful for what he said. It's true, we took those words to heart, because it was way before 2014 that I saw this problem, that other people on Main Street saw this problem, that other people who have gone out of business after owning stores on Main Street for decades have seen this problem. We begged the BBC and the town to do something about it. It finally got to a point where we said, nobody is doing anything about it, we've got to save ourselves, similar to what has happened with the BRG and the Putnam. And I remember the chair of the select board, on a number of occasions, made the comment, "We have to save ourselves, nobody else is coming to save us." That is the mentality that we took, that we don't want to do somebody else's job, we want somebody else to do their job, we want somebody to do this, because we need to run our stores, we need to stay in business and feed our families. It has not been done. So a year ago, we decided to take a board that was loose members of people on Main Street and formalize it, because this needed to be done. Last year, fifteen months ago, when we had this process in January, the select board told the BBC that they have to improve their marketing and advertising. We're here a year, over a year later, I don't see the products of that. I see wonderful projects for beautification that were brought to the BBC by other people. I don't want to take anything away from that, but I guess one of my questions is, these are great projects, the BBC said, "Oh, okay, this is great, we'll help you flow through it." Why weren't they done five years ago? Tree lights, banners, these are great ideas, they needed to be done by our downtown association. So, it's great that other people are stepping up to the plate and saying, "We want to do this, and we'll flow through your organization." We're an organization who has said, "Okay, well, we've tried that." I tried it as recently as three weeks ago. For whatever reason, it's something that has not worked yet. I haven't given up. I desperately want to work with the BBC, BDA. We do work with the Chamber. What I'm asking you is to not punish us for all of the good work and the problem that we saw that we've helped to solve, but instead say, "Okay, you did this, we trust that you can do it again for another year, and let's talk about it next year." Maybe the BBC has this, great ideas for marketing and promotion, maybe we fall by the wayside and we can't even get our promotions together. Okay? Let's revisit this in a year. We've proven for a year that we have brought people to businesses' doors, that we've shown you that business owners respect what we do and want town funds to be used to support our organization. We're just asking for a fair shake. There's no slippery slope here. We're taking it one year at a time, you're looking at the results of what we've done and judging them. That's it.
I still have the mic for a second.
Yep, please.
Thank you for going detail in answering that stuff, I do appreciate it. I still kind of stand behind some of the earlier things that I said, and the idea of, it's challenging that unfortunately, and please, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys, at this point in time, I would look at it as, the Bennington Downtown Alliance and the Downtown Bennington Alliance, not by the individual, but as a two organizations, don't necessarily seem to work well together. Is that a fair statement?
I would say we haven't had the opportunity to see how well we work together yet.
Okay.
Just let you-
Thank you, Carson. I don't quite know what to say at this point. I do see a similarity between your idea, not a similarity in idea, but the process, that you have this idea and feelings that you can do marketing, the same as Lynn had the ideas that she had with the group of people that she's working with for Grove Bennington. The approach, however, was really different. They've managed to do a tremendous amount of fundraising, which you haven't been able to do quite yet, not that it won't happen in the future, but I like, I like the cooperation, and the results are visible, and I agree that I like, I don't like the fact that you would be existing side by side, and I'm just going to say it, the names are really problematic, Bennington Downtown Alliance and the other one, Garlic Quest and Garlic Fest. It just really bothers me, they seem to be intentionally confusing and competitive with each other. I don't know if it was meant to be that way, but that's how I perceive it. It's almost like you're using Garlic Fest to create something else. I don't know, like I said, I don't know if that was the intention, but it's, it's just how I perceive it. I'm not on Facebook, so, you know, these are great photos and great stories, none of which I saw until I looked through your packet, and I agree with Chad, my husband's on Facebook, and he's gotten at least fifteen, twenty notifications of people getting off of Facebook, and that's probably just in the last two weeks. So I don't know what the future of Facebook is going to look like, but it may not be what we're all thinking it will be. I can't put my finger on it, I've said this lots of times, I'm, I'm a philosophical person when I think of things, and there's something about this that doesn't feel right, it doesn't feel good, and I can't quite express why, but I think it has a lot to do with what you spoke about earlier, and the kind of animosity and inability to work with John and with the organ, with that organization, Bennington Downtown Alliance, so, it's difficult, it's difficult for me.
When, I assume when you say your inability to work with the organization, that you're not just speaking to me, but you're speaking to our seventy-five members. not just speaking to me, but you're speaking to our seventy-five members. Because it's not just, I think to some extent, our organization has been made out to be centered around me, and I think that's insulting to all of our volunteers and board members.
I don't have any knowledge of, I didn't have any knowledge of what you had done until I got this.
Right, and I think that a perfect example of that is the Garlic Fest, Garlic Quest thing, and how it was interpreted. Garlic Quest, Jonah came up with that, he's the president of the Chamber, it wasn't us. He wanted to mesh the idea that we had for scavenger hunt in with Garlic Fest. So, I think there's an interpretation of animosity that is actually, or subterfuge, which isn't there whatsoever, which is why I invited Eric and Mike McDonough to my building three weeks ago, because I wanted the BBC to be a part of this project with the Chamber and the town and us. You're saying that there's an animosity and a refusal to work with them, what I'm seeing is repeated attempts.
I'm not saying it's you, I'm saying it's the combination.
It may, I, and again, I'll come back to, I think it's more a sense of, we've never had the opportunity to try to work together as two groups on an even playing field. And that's what the downtown merchants are wanting. I think it's great to bring in Grobennington Initiative and flash up icons of forty different kind of peripheral organizations that you might have gotten a phone call from once, but, no, I'm not sure how many real partnerships, how many real partnerships exist in the downtown business community.
Okay, all right, now I think we're starting to get a little bit astray of the process tonight. Jean, your question's been asked.
I'm through.
Jim.
First of all, I'd like to make a recommendation that we table this till our next meeting, and I'll tell you why. I wanna, you demonstrated to me, when I asked you about Google Analytics, and you had a, I'd like to hear the person who really has a better knowledge of just how broad the reach is. You know, and I think most of the people who may be watching this, marketing for Bennington has always been a sore spot with me, always. It's been inadequate. Even when our former community development director brought out these glossy, what are they?
Brochures.
Brochures, they were never used, never used, and what a colossal waste of time and energy. That too. And more to Donald's point, I'd like to know more about this multi-organizational advertising campaign, I'd like that broken down. And more to his point about budget, you know, where are you spending this money exactly? I think you've demonstrated the things that I've really been ticked off about for as long as I've sat on this board, and seen no traction, no action, or very little, or what hasn't, I feel, been demonstrated. Even tonight, when I pointed out the
John.
John's website, what is it? I'm gonna screw up the name.
Destination.
What is it?
Destination.
Yes. And you go and you click on these different places where, you know, if you were visiting Bennington, you'd wanna know where to stay, you'd wanna know about restaurants and other activities, and it's, there are some other spots where, you know, having fun and history is done well. But by and large, this isn't a good representation. But here's one recommendation that I'd like to make to you and your organization, is that over the next two weeks, you sit down with John and with the Chamber, and Joel, we've gotta be honest with one another, I think when you, when you say that there is, you know, when you sort of hint around that there's, there's been no bad blood, we know different. And what I would suggest to you is that you have somebody from your organization that will sit down and has no history with them, and talk about developing a scheme where the three of you can become one organization, and make it a priority, or come to an agreement that you guys handle marketing, because you've done it well.
I guess that, you know, the question I have is whether or not, are you making a motion to table this matter?
Yes.
We have a second?
I'll second.
I don't think there's any discussion, I think it's just a vote.
I thought Joel was gonna come back.
Well, I'd just like to, kind of, point of order, tabling something means you're putting it off in definitely without
No, that's, no, I said two weeks.
Okay.
When we meet again. I've addressed my very particular concerns, I want greater explanation of how far the reach is, how you've done it, and I'd like, John, if you can do that as well, because Joel has said that there are, there is an ability to better gauge the reach that apparently you're not aware of. And I think that's something that, well, we need to compare and contrast. But if you can demonstrate to me that it's as far as you say it is, I really wanna know.
All in favor? Tabling it?
All in favor to have them on the agenda for next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Do you wanna go through the exercise?
Oh, we have already, this is the vote.
All in favor of tabling.
Okay, that's two in favor, all in favor of not tabling it.
It's four.
Okay, is there a motion that someone would like to make relative to the request? You know, this, I think we have to, before I, I'll make a motion, but I would like to just preface it, Joel, by saying, "We really appreciate the work you've done on this." So, you've done good work, and we all are very thankful for it. And when you say, or when you said, you know, "Don't punish us for this," I, it hurts a little bit, because I don't see it that way, you know, I don't, if we don't choose to fund this, I don't see it as punishing you. I think we would like to encourage you, no matter what the vote is, this is a good effort. I think you've really brought to our attention a hole that we would like to fill. I did hear the BDA saying that they're working on improving their web, their social media presence by twenty-five percent or more. I would be interested to hear about the Chamber at some point, but I, I want you to know that I'm thankful, I'm personally thankful for the stories you've written and for the work you've done on this, no matter how this vote goes. But I don't feel that this, I don't feel that I could straight-facedly explain how the money's gonna work, or why these funds are, should be spent right now. I don't, I don't feel like I have enough specifics. And so, for that reason, I'm gonna make a motion that we decline this request.
Can we put the motion into positive versus negative?
Yeah. I could.
What?
Can I motion that we support their $4,500 versus not supporting it?
Sure.
Sure.
Is there a motion?
Sure.
Second. Okay, further discussion on that?
I would have liked more time, I would have liked the two weeks, I would have liked to hear a little bit more. I think spending money in Bennington, to promote Bennington is a good thing, and I don't think supporting one is saying we're not supporting another, and supporting one, I don't think it's something, I'd love to see you guys work together, I really would. It's not a knock on either one. I think it's good to spend money on Bennington and promote Bennington and support our businesses. I did not wanna vote tonight, I would, I would have liked to have two weeks, but if we're gonna vote, let's vote.
I guess, following, we have this, no, we're talking on the floor right now. Jean, what's your feeling?
We're voting, what's your motion?
To vote for.
To approve their funding request.
I can't, I can't approve that today.
We get to vote?
Hmm?
Yeah.
To vote.
Tom wanted to know how I felt.
No, you just ask, this is the discussion.
Yeah. You have one year to make, do a lot of work, so we'll know our position in a second when we vote.
I've heard your favor of, you're probably
I'd like to, yeah. I think, you know, we've, we've had a black hole in a very weak spot in marketing Bennington for too many years. And here, this group has come along, and they've demonstrated that they're getting, the attention that I think, that I've wanted for us to get. And I really wanna say again, I think we need to stop, go home, think about it for two weeks, and let them come back and show us the analytics that I requested and a better breakdown. That's fair, that is fair. And for us to do otherwise is not.
I'm not in favor of this at all, because I don't think it's really a benefit specifically to the taxpayers of the district. This is a tax on the taxpayers within the district, even though it benefits the entire town. If a request comes to the board at budget time for an entity that can do downtown marketing and advertising, I'm perfectly willing to hear that at budget time, but not as part of this process for the downtown improvement district funding. So, in fairness, they did come to us at budget time last year and asked to talk to us about this, but, but I think what I hear you saying, Tom, is that we felt it was more just about the downtown, and now we're seeing that it's It's a broader, it's the whole town, whole downtown, because the downtown improvement district does not encompass, or it's just part of the downtown. And the benefit of this exercise, I believe, is for the entire downtown. And frankly, if the marketing and advertising approach continues, and there's a, some credibility of this organization over the next year, I certainly will revisit that. But right now, it's too new, and it's too, as you say.
Can we call the vote then?
All right.
Can we call the vote?
I can say one then.
No, no. You have
He's calling the question.
I'm just saying, can we call the question, I think it's
Yep, call and question. All in favor, signified by aye.
In favor.
Of what?
Hold on.
Of the vote, signified by Are you talking about Chad's motion? Yeah, Chad's motion.
Yeah, his motion on the floor.
Wasn't seconded, was it? Yeah.
Jim seconded.
Yeah, it's been discussed. Okay. So.
To approve the
What is the question?
What's the motion?
To approve the request for $4,500. Okay.
You took citizen comments before you voted on BDA, or take citizen comments?
I'm sure, go ahead, feel free, you're right.
Without getting in the middle of this, I find it hard to believe that you would award a $77,000 contract without putting out a request or proposal. That's all I wanted to say.
How many years have we been doing this with the BDA?
A lot.
And we heard the report tonight? Thank you, others.
I just wanted to remind you all, we did Old Castle with the BDA, the Bennington Downtown Alliance, did $27,250 marketing promotion of downtown Bennington last year on channels ten and nineteen, and it was seen by hundreds of thousands of people, and got thousands, tens and tens of thousands of clicks. So, it's not that, it's not that it's not ever been done, Jim, and you remember what we did last year.
Yes, yeah. But I, you know, if you, when you made your presentation tonight, when I asked about specifics, and I've asked over and over again about where you're marketing and how are you doing it, this is the first that I, that I've heard about, this money that
I heard in the presentation.
Well, I don't recall it, it was, it was packed.
Okay, the motion's been called, and all in favor of the motion for $4,500, signified by aye. It's three. All those opposed to it, it doesn't pass. Okay, that will be it. Thank you very much for coming tonight. Stu, you have a manager's report.
Let me have some liquor control licenses first. I'm gonna circulate a new, newer list. There are three licenses up for renewal on this list, they just circulated for signature.
Okay, little point of order, we're trying to do business here, everyone be quiet and take your leave or listen quietly.
All right, so I'll circulate that for signature, and I do have one liquor license application here that I'm presenting separately. This renewal of the Bennington Pizza House down on North Side Drive, they are currently under suspension because of difficulties with taxes, the state tax department. If this board decides to approve this license, it will go to the state of Vermont and be held there until such time as they are in compliance. If you decide not to approve it, then it stays here, and they would have to reapply at some point when they're back in compliance.
Okay.
So, I will circulate that separately.
Could you repeat?
It's pizza.
It's the Bennington Pizza House on North Side Drive.
Okay.
My price, however.
Yep.
Thank you.
And while that's going on, I can do my manager's report?
Yep.
No, wait, let's take a pause here for a second, because it's very rare that you pass it to me and you don't sign it.
I don't wanna sign the one that's in, out of compliance.
Then disapprove it.
The whole thing, or can I sign one of them?
No, those, those, those are all renewals, they're fine.
Oh, okay.
It's the other one that it needs an approval or disapproval.
Okay, so I'm not signing that one.
I just wanted to
Okay.
No signature, I wanted to know what
Yeah, what, basically, what are we doing, there's kind of other folks
This is, these are all in compliance.
Yeah, but those, basically, it's non-compliant, but if we sign acceptance, once they get into compliance
If you approve it, it goes north and is held there by the state until they're in compliance. If you disapprove it, then it dies here.
And they can never get it back?
No, they can apply when they're back in conformance with the state.
So, and your staff recommendation on this is?
I
It's just a matter of perfunctory process.
Normally, back in the day, all of these licenses would be approved at the local level and then the state aggregate out with, with the other.
But what about today?
It's up to you, you folks in the board.
No, you were saying, you said back in the day, like today's different.
Well, obviously, today might be different.
Stuart, is either gonna hinder their ability to do business? I mean, they can't sell without a license?
They can't sell alcohol anyway, at the present time. Their license has been suspended by state.
One way or the other, they're gonna make it so they could do business quicker.
If we approve it, it'll probably allow them to do business sooner.
Once they come into compliance.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Excuse me, Tom, I have a question about that motion.
Sure.
There were three in favor.
And three opposed.
And you, and three opposed, so you said that
It does not pass.
It needs four votes.
Needs a majority.
No, I understand, so it just dies, it doesn't feel bad.
Yes, right, no.
Ken.
Motion for reconsideration. Yep. Thanks, Sam.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good.
Do we ask, can we make that motion?
For reconsideration.
I think you have to make it
I mean, it didn't really go either way.
Yes, okay.
Ask again. Can we make a motion to reconsider the vote?
I believe you can, but I'd have to refer to council.
Generally, a motion to reconsider has to be made at the very next meeting, and I think it has to be made by someone who voted in the affirmative.
Yep.
Good to know.
Is that right, Dan?
I believe so, I think it has to be at the next meeting, I don't think you can reconsider it the same.
If we're ready for my manager's report?
I guess.
I have no idea. We have some road closings for 2018, presented by the Bennington Downtown Alliance. They wish to close the following roads, Main Street from the Four Corners East to Valentine Street, School Street from Main to Pleasant, and Silver Street from Main to Union for Mayfest, and John has already mentioned that tonight, from May 26th, the roads would be closed from 5:00 AM until 6:00 PM. They are also requesting road closures for the first Fridays, which will occur on June 1, July 6, August 3, September 7, and October 5. And that is School Street from Main to Pleasant from 4:00 PM until 8:00 PM on those dates. And I need a motion by the board to approve those closures.
Some over. Any discussion? All in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Seven in favor, no opposition.
The second action item is a designation of an alternate representative. In wastewater and water treatment projects where federal and state funds are involved, generally, the manager is the authorized rep, and that is true in this particular case, which is the wastewater treatment project. But in my absence, there Uh, but in my absence, uh, they, they, state would prefer to have someone who is also designated so that, uh, requests of reimbursement can move through the process, uh, rather quickly, rather than be held up. And so this, uh, document allows us to designate RJ Jolly as the alternate, uh, representative, authorized representative. It requires, uh, the, a motion by the board, uh, to approve that designation, uh, and then sign this document.
Stuart, why would this not be the assistant town manager?
Yes, exactly what I was gonna say.
Uh, because the, well, it, it could be, if you wanted to be the assistant town manager, that's fine. Uh, this was suggested by the, uh, agency personnel who are dealing with the wastewater treatment project, because RJ is, uh, more involved in the actual day-to-day, uh, oversight of the project, but we can change this to be the assistant manager if you so decide.
But we have, I, I think, I speak for the board when we say we have a great deal of faith in RJ, and he's done tremendous work.
I'd rather see...
But it feels a little bit like there's an oversight piece, when it gets to approving payments and whatnot, that, uh, he, he's...
In the trenches.
He's in the trenches a little bit. Uh, I wonder if it maybe should be Dan or Melissa or somebody, uh...
Well, I, I would, I would certainly think Dan would be a good choice.
Yeah, I'd move it, all right, let's have Dan.
And we could simply change this.
Yep.
So I, I think, before we vote on this, I, I would like, if we do vote on this, to have it not be an expression of lack of faith in RJ, whom we have a tremendous amount of faith in, uh, but just seeing this as something of a...
This is an administrative function.
Financial, administrative oversight piece, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Seven in favor, no opposition.
Sorry, Dan.
I know you really wanted to sign.
I'll circulate that for you.
We should've made zero.
I didn't even see her. Didn't see her.
I know.
That's really all I have. I note that in the packet is an updated purchasing policy. I know we've been talking about this through the charter review process. Uh, Melissa has been, taken that to heart and has prepared, uh, a revised purchasing policy. We didn't put it on the agenda this time, we wanted to give you folks time to read it, uh, digest it, uh, perhaps offer suggestions if you find, uh, uh, problems with it. It is, as Melissa's memo, memorandum explains, it's based on a number of different purchasing policies, uh, model policies by the league, uh, but, and by others, uh, and, uh, we'll bring it to a future agenda when you folks are ready for it.
Good, thank you. Thanks. Yeah, I think we all have some comments on that. Yes. If I could ask you one question on something that was in your manager's report packet, I, I should know this already, but it, uh, this may be a question for Dan, but the cell tower expansion, um, is, will that be visible in any way, or is it just a couple of new discs on the tower?
It's really just replacing existing antennas with new antennas, or it should be the same size.
So when they say no visible impact, they mean no visible impact?
They often will exaggerate, but in this case, I believe it's an accurate statement.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And just a one last point, the boards and commissions list is, is here. Uh, those, those applications, uh, have been coming in, and usually, we start that process in May, so we'll be looking, I'll be looking for some direction on interviews or lack thereof, and those kinds of things.
Other business? Uh, Jean first?
Nothing.
Nothing, good.
Um, I, I know this meeting got long, uh, tonight. On the next agenda, will we see the town garages and the kind of...
Yes, yes, we pushed it off of this agenda because of that fear.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
I do think we should offer a plan on the purchasing policy, which is, which I think we all will wanna have a lot to say on. We don't have to decide it tonight, but just to be clear that we're, there's no sort of tacit approval going on here.
Yeah, exactly. No, this is gonna be set for an agenda discussion, full agenda, and be prepared for it, um, because we've all had the experience, but the last policy's two thousand and five or something like that. So I think what Melissa's done is trying to bring it current, but there, for every door that's open, we wanna have, make sure we have closure on the other side. So let's just be prepared. Um, we're gonna need an executive session on personnel matter, not tonight?
No, I have a couple other.
Yeah, okay, I'm just jumping in, remind myself.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Two things, uh, please express to RJ my appreciation for those emails, now that he's been doing those, those have been very informative, and I know he's got a lot to do, but I really, really do appreciate that.
It's been helpful.
And, um, I wanted to bring the board's attention, we're always talking sports, but Evan Cosrock, some of you may know, is a junior at the high school, and, uh, he recently took, um, fifth place in the statewide, um, sixty-first annual UVM math contest award. Uh, so fifth overall in the state is a great honor, he's been, uh, the whole of the day at UVM, um, where they, uh, recognize him and his family, you know, with lunch, and, uh, just a little bit about the test from the UVM website, it's a high school, uh, prize examination administered by members of the Department of Mathematics and Statistics at UVM. It's one of the longest-running annual high school mathematics contests in the US. Uh, the competition consists of forty-one questions, uh, number theory, algebra, geometry, uh, so we have kids all the way from ninth grade through seniors take it, um, and they have two hours to take it, take it with no aid of technology.
Wow.
Very tough test. Uh, there were times where I would take maybe two weeks to complete the test, I mean, go through a problem here and there, so it's amazing that he finished fifth, and that he should really be proud of what he did.
That's amazing.
It's a great representation of our school and town.
It's awesome.
That was, that was it.
Thanks. We'd like to have an executive session on personnel matter, uh, at the convenience of the board. Um, it's not a matter that's not appropriate for public discussion, it's not tonight, but I, I would need a time and a date for you folks to...
Can it be tonight?
No.
That'd be done.
Okay.
Well, it can be tonight. No, and I'm thinking about, I'm thinking, I'm thinking, it's gonna take a good hour.
So you're looking for a date other than our scheduled, next scheduled meeting?
Yeah, yeah. Unless you wanna put it at the end of the next scheduled meeting, but it looks like we're already full agenda for the next meeting.
Keep interfering with my daughter's softball schedule.
No, hey, you got it, that's great.
What's that, what's the end of the next?
Week.
They're on a date, they're on a time, let's try it.[1748.26]